I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, July 17th at 6:32 PM. Welcome, everybody. Can I have a roll call, please?
Director Flescher?
Here.
Director Hatt?
Here.
Director Kellogg?
Here.
Vice President Dethick?
Here.
Thank you. Approval of the consent calendar. Does anybody have a motion to approve the consent calendar as shown, or is there something?
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Anybody would like to have anything pulled off?
No, but I'd like to make a comment on one thing.
Okay.
Positive comment.
What item?
E, 2E, pump station gas engine.
What page?
I had it down here.
Maybe Kevin can take us there in a sec.
2E?
Yeah.
I've got iPad. Page is numbered here, so I don't know. Once you find it, whatever page you're in.
Scroll down, we can tell.
Is that the $25,000?
That's the $25,000. I'm waiting on page two.
Oh, okay. I don't need to look at it. Thank you.
iPad, iPad, page 52.
Thank you.
Yeah, 55. 55, I mean 52 through 53, 55.
And what was your comment, Doug?
Having had a little bit of experience working on those type of situations, in fact, I do it quite frequently. Is that a natural gas engine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I figured it was. But I'd like to compliment whoever put this together because it is really well done. And did you do that, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Well, you stand to be congratulated. And the Murphy switch that's on that is really excellent. So the engine is completely protected. All you'd have to do is run from the plant or wherever you're at down there and start it back up again or figure out why it overheated. So that is really a well-designed. A Murphy switch for those of you who may not be acquainted with it is a safety device for engines, and I've seen a lot of engines saved because of that and a lot of engines not saved, particularly on pumps. And at our view, we have three or four tractors have it. So excellent. And I would imagine that by, and this Mur Gas Cal, for this type of an engine, $25,000 is pretty cheap today. It's a good deal. That's the only comment I had. Compliment Jim for the design of it. Excellent.
Okay. All in favor of approving? All in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0.
Can we put in our orders for lunch at the general membership meeting and luncheon?
It's just all the same. So we just need to present.
It's just like the one up at the buffet.
Oh, no, I know. I just want to say I'm going to attend, so that...
Will you give a check to the Buick County Special District Association?
You have to give them a check tonight.
Oh, you have to give them a check tonight?
Yeah.
To the Buick County?
From each one of us.
Give it to her and she's going to forward it to Buick County.
Is today the last day, Georgiana?
I just mailed it off to them.
Is today the last day?
I just gave mine to her.
I will be on vacation next week. They need the money unless you want to send it directly to them.
Well, I happened to bring my check with me.
Okay.
$30.
Thirty per person.
Well, that's only going to be me, so.
The guy just gave her a check, so.
Okay. Public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for the public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board, with comments limited to five minutes per agenda item. Is there anybody from the public here tonight that would like to speak to something other?
Thanks for asking. I'll keep it under five minutes. Ward Habril for the record. A couple of things. As you know, I am concerned about water conservation. I'm also part of the hosting group for an upcoming workshop about composting and recycling sponsored by the Paradise Grange and the Paradise Garden Club, actually this Sunday afternoon. During registration, several people have asked whether or not it's going to cover anything that has to do with water conservation, like drip irrigation, sprinklers, et cetera, which I said, not so much, but the feedback was, nobody else around here knows much about it, and I'm tired of paying so much for my water. So I'm going to say a little bit of something, but I'm going to be repeating this series because I'm no longer doing it in Chico State. And when I do, I hope that in the future I'll be a little better informed as to what helped people learn when we're talking about composting, recycling, and conservation.
We're going to be working on that in the Water Conservation Committee. Thank you, Ward.
Yes.
Is there anybody else from the public that had a comment not on, or had an item that's not on the agenda? No, we will move on. Committee reports and presentations. Board oral reports regarding the representation of commissions and committees. First one is McAlia Botanical Garden. Director Kellogg?
We had the meeting, and it was successful. We had about 14 people show up, and of the 14, I think 12 was volunteered to be on an advisory committee for the botanical gardens and were interested in contributing time and possibly resources. And given the kind of publicity we got out on it, that was very good. Two of them were members of the Park and Recreation Board, two ladies, and others were from the community and so forth. And everybody seemed to be interested and asked good questions. Mike Crink opened the meeting and gave his deal, and he invited me up to talk about the botanical garden, which I did for a while. And then we took questions and answers from the audience, free give and take with a small group like that, and we got some very positive things out of it. Mike will call another meeting at his schedule like he called the one I was at that night. Being the kind of a committee this is, I'm just an advisory to Mike and have no power to, and actually, we don't as a group have any power over what they want to do now, other than the memo of understanding we have. So I was trying to help to get more public support, and it helped because Mike doesn't have the financial from grant or anything. And it's possible the botanical garden might even get started before the park does. So with volunteer help and so forth. The next meeting will be actually to try to organize volunteer committee. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Director Kellogg. Number two is Buick Local Agency Formation, Buick LAFCO. Director Duncan?
Okay, we met on the 10th of July, which is a Wednesday. We met a day earlier because of the, there was something else in the chamber. And we approved the budget on the consent agenda. And then we did four approvals of septic, I mean not septic, sewer connections outside of the city limits. And, but two of them have failed and, and one was, I think it was on a 25 by 50 lot.
In Chico?
In Chico.
Chico.
It's septic system. And so they figured it was going to go pretty soon and everything. And so we approved all of those. They all have waived their rights to contest an annexation. And, and we did cut the fee down. I think we're charging $600 now instead of, it was a lot more before. Trying to encourage these people that are in the nitrate area to, to hook up to the sewers since the sewers are already there. And that was it for that meeting. And then I also, on the, on the 13th, I'm at the Cal LAFCO meeting in Sacramento. And has anyone seen AB 240? It's about mutual water districts. And what they're doing is, is they're, they're trying to make them as accountable to the public as we are.
Mutual water companies?
Uh huh.
Which, they're non, they're basically nonprofit corporations.
Are they, it said any, it said mutual is anybody who provides, I read the AB 240, and they said a mutual water company is anybody who provides water to anybody in California.
Feeded water.
So it could be Cal, so it's Cal?
Cal Waters.
Cal Water. Or?
Delora.
Delora, yeah. But anyway, they have to be accountable to their ratepayers. If this passes, they'll have to be accountable to their ratepayers, just like we are. And they'll also have to do everything in public if the AB 240 passes.
They'll get out of the water business if it passes.
They might, they might. And let's see, and then we're having our annual convention at Squaw Valley at the end of August. Oh, and LAFCO has canceled their August meeting due to lack of?
Commitment.
Commitment, right. Activities.
That's it.
Thank you, Director Duncan. The third one is Water Conservation Committee. Directors Corolla and Flesher are in there, and Director Flesher is the chairperson.
Thank you, Shep.
Thank you.
We had our second meeting of the committee on July 9th. As would, in the first meeting, we did a lot of brainstorming again. I think we covered a lot of ground. We have out of the first meeting and the second meeting about 24, 5, 6 different ideas and a true brainstorming session of how we can get this conservation across. And what Jim is working as the clerk and secretary of the group offered to do, he's going to categorize them in groups so that we can meet next time we meet, which is on August 13th, I'll look at it, and utilize the ones that we want and not utilize them. So it'll take us much less time. We appreciate you doing that, Jim. One of the things we did discuss was the statement and some of the comments that we were hoping to have on it, along with the public relations group. And one of the things is getting people aware of their own irrigation systems, and Ward really related to it just a minute ago in our public comments, and get people to watch their clock if they have a clock-type irrigation system. And Lauren came up with a real clincher, we thought, as a committee, if your clock is right, you will water at night. Is that right, Lauren? And that kind of set the mood for things. Those, we have a regular committee meeting going on here right now. Is that about right, guys?
Just about.
Yeah, why me? Shep, you're on that. Anybody else that was there, would they like to make a comment? I thought it was very productive, and we're hoping to have some type of an educational event before we get into the rainy season.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you very much, Director Flesher. Okay, General Manager's report, we're going to postpone until George gets here. He is tied up until 7:30, so we will do the legal report. Dustin Cooper, please.
Unless there's something, a question the board would like to ask me, my report will be handled in closed session.
Is there anything the board would like to ask him?
Do we have a copy of the bill? Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to go on to old business, PID Rules and Regulations, Chapter 2, Directors and Officers. And I think this is the one that I postponed. Kevin, if you can bring that up on the screen for us. This was some wording that we made some post-changes to. Everybody is okay with it. I would say we should just make a motion to approve it unless somebody has something they wanted to change.
Yeah, I do have something. There was one place where it says that only the president can call a special meeting.
Yeah, I saw that also.
And that, we, that isn't what we've done in the past. If three directors want a special?
It's like on the second page of it.
Yeah. If three directors want a special meeting, then it can be done without...
Yeah, there's actually, I, Georgiana's going to pass out an email here. I had suggested a change to, is this in this? This is later. This is actually four. Yeah.
This is agenda item 8D.
So what I'm passing out is related to your comment, Larry, but that's in the policy that is later on the agenda.
Thank you.
So this is a amendment to it, but we'll discuss it later?
Yes. My email proposes amendments to the?
For 1. B.
Chapter 4 of the policy.
But that's not a part of 7A here, is it?
No.
That's in item D in new business, right?
Yes.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, you brought it up in the wrong section, Larry.
Oh, I did. Oh, okay.
I couldn't find it here as we were going through real quickly. That's what happened.
So...
Where is the one that we're doing now?
Dustin, correct me, we cannot vote on old business 7A right now until we make that amendment?
No, sure we can. We can.
Okay.
It's a separate item.
And then we'll just amend?
Separate item.
We'll just amend it down in 8D.
We could discuss it in 8.
Okay, so do I have a motion to?
Right here.
And then we'll make the amendments down in, your amendments down there. Other than that section?
I have a lot of questions about this, but we're in 2. Are we in number, make sure I'm in the right place?
Yes, we're in section 2.
2, yeah. I have comments on several things. Go ahead and make your motion, and then I'd like to have time to have my comments.
I move approval to adopt the changes to chapter 2.19 through 2.22 of the policy manual as presented.
Do you have a second?
I don't want a second.
I will second. On there, discussion?
Um...
Is there anybody from the public that has had a chance to read this that would like to discuss it before the board debates it? No? All good? Okay. At this time, then the board will debate it. Your, Director Kellogg, I'm sorry.
Let's see. "The board shall make forum committees composed of its own members and the public for such purposes, purposes that it deems appropriate." So I, I think that covers it, that if we have to form an ad hoc committee, the board usually votes on it. And the board decides as a whole whether they want an ad hoc committee or not. So I would strike, you know, I'd be done with B. "Appointment of committee members at the district's first regular meeting in January. The president board shall appoint members of various standing committees."
Which page are you on, Bill, just so?
88, iPad.
2.8?
2.8, right.
Yeah, 2.8.
Go to 88, Kevin.
Page 88.
Sorry, there it is.
First one is 2.9, 19. The second one's 2.2. "Committee assignments shall only be changed during the calendar year by majority vote of the board." I've never heard of us changing committee assignments during the year. "The president board shall appoint members of ad hoc committees." Again, I'd go back to the board would form the committee or the president would call, but that would be, you know, you have one, according to the present bylaws, the president appoints board members at one time of the year, period.
Right. I think, though, that this is the good thing because we ran into it with Rick in the middle of the year. He wasn't here any time.
Right.
So therefore, our present policy wouldn't allow any changes. So this does allow changes if the majority of the board wants to do it. And I think, so I think that's why this...
Or if we want to add on a duty to that committee, then...
Add on what?
A duty?
A duty, or, yeah, yeah, or some type of assignment, then 2.2, V.2 allows you to do that.
Right. Whereas before, we were locked in. Yeah.
That's, that's the way that I read that. And also, the other way that I read it, because I've seen this in another spot, whereas if for some reason the president in particular didn't like the way some board member was acting, the only way that he changed that would be with the board of the board.
Yeah, board majority.
Majority of the board.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Then over on, to C, Meeting Committees. "General meetings of the committees, meetings shall be called by the general managers necessary for district, district business." I was of the opinion that the chairman of a committee can call for meetings. He should get, you know, like anybody else, make sure that other people are going to show up. But I don't think it should be exclusively for the general manager or district business. He normally calls them as a matter of what we've been doing, but occasionally, I think it does. Committee chairman would like to be able to call a meeting.
I, I think you're right on that, Bill.
Yeah, and also too...
I think it should be...
Sometimes Kevin calls them.
Well...
He's not the manager, general manager.
I think that we, we should probably have a statement in there, something like, "Meetings may be called by the general manager or?"
Or, yeah.
"The committee chair?"
Okay.
"As," whatever that...
"As necessary for district business."
"For business, district, uh, district business." I think you're right there, Bill.
Yeah, okay. Then the next one is the D. "Committee reports shall be made to the board. The next scheduled board meeting business discussed at the committee meeting is that is a subject of an agenda item need not be discussed as part of the committee report." And I don't know. To me, sometimes we do it and sometimes we don't. It seems to depend on the circumstances.
Well, it gives you an out.
Yeah, it, it's not saying you can't.
If you don't want to, if you don't want to report at the committee meeting, you can just say, "This is on the agenda, and we'll talk about it."
Okay, but that's what I thought.
This gives you an out.
But it's got to be one or the other.
Right.
Yeah, it's not saying you can't, it's just saying you need not discuss it.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So that's okay?
Yeah, all right. And then the next one is Paradise Lake Recreation Committee. It's 2.21C. "Recognized committee members shall receive an annual combination voting and parking pass for the purpose of visiting and inspecting facilities." All the years I was on the board on that committee, I only paid once, and I didn't get my change back. And I would just drive down and park and walk around and talk to people. Yeah, I never rode out on the lake, but I know if I'd called Greg ahead of time, I'm sure he would be happy to escort you out around the lake. So I don't see any necessity for the committee meetings shall receive, members shall receive an annual combination voting and parking pass for visiting and inspecting facilities.
Well, I think if you give it to them, it's going to encourage them to go up there and inspect it.
Yeah, I think that's why it was devised.
Right, a lot of people didn't, like you, didn't know you could get up there. It's just like a board member can get up there anytime without a pass.
Yeah.
But a lot of us, a lot of board members didn't know that. You didn't know it because you paid.
I paid once and learned a bad lesson.
But I mean, so, I know, I've known since I've been on the board that we automatically get a free pass up there. I've never gotten one, and the only time...
But do, if you say we get a free pass, do we have a free pass?
We have gotten one this year.
Because I got one this year for the first time.
This is the first year we got them.
Yeah, the same year. I put up my club logo.
But I knew you could get them. I knew you could get them, but I never bothered getting them.
Well, the problem I have is now you're talking about...
The Lake Committee.
The Lake Committee, and does recognized, what does recognized mean? There are quite a few public members on that committee. They would all get passes and...
There's only two, isn't there?
Well, I don't, no, I'm not on the Lake Committee, so how many public members do we have that are actually on the committee?
I think there's only two.
I don't know. I think that there's only, I, I didn't know whether it was just one or two.
The employee, yeah.
Me too. I don't know, it's one or two.
Now, how about the advisory man? There's somebody there from Park and Rec.
Yeah, there's Parks and Rec.
Well, it's only the members of the committee, so are there people that show up?
There's three. Yeah, there is rec person.
County Park and Rec, I think there's three, yes.
That are non-PID.
Well, and there's also, who's the, Darrell?
Oh. Okay, that's four there, Darrell.
Yeah, Darrell, yeah.
And the way that I look at it is that they might not want to?
Fire Safety Council.
Find Greg, or maybe Greg is not available.
That is four.
Well, no, my question is, are we going to give it to all the committee members, whether they're, you know, they're advisory or they're...
Except they're an appointed committee member, I believe is the way we set it up.
We, we approved them here.
I was going to say, it was an appointed committee member.
Okay.
We did that, not last month, month before.
Right.
Seems like.
Well, you appointed committees.
Right.
We appointed them.
Of course, it go, although, do we have to put it down that if they resign from the committee, they have to forfeit their pass?
I don't know. That's why I was questioning the whole thing. It's sort of like, it's sort of like a can of worms a little bit.
I think they cease to be a recognized committee member at that point.
Right, and so then...
Right, they would...
But they still have the pass.
But they'd have to forfeit?
They'd have to forfeit.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Do we ask them to forfeit?
Do you want to amend?
But I think...
Doug wants to talk to them.
Well, I think it's a nice gesture to give people, that way they feel free to grow up, and they don't have to worry about parking or anything because they can get it.
Well, see, the public members, until this year, I've always been on the Lake Committee.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of public members that would quit in the middle of the year. That's why I'm saying, well, maybe if we're going to give them the pass and tell them, if you get off the committee, you have to give it back.
Oh, they actually quit in the middle of the year?
Oh, yeah. Committee, especially public members.
Yeah, we never knew.
I kind of.
Especially public members.
They came and went all the time.
Just another reason why I don't want to have public members on there.
So should we?
That's not a good reason.
Should we amend 2.21C to say after this sentence that if they cease to be a committee member, that they would forfeit their?
I don't even think we have to put it in. Because they would not then be a recognized member, and therefore, they would not have right to one. I think that fact would allow us to ask for it back.
Yeah. Of course, I, I have no problem with asking for it back, I just, whether or not they wanted to relinquish it or made themselves available to relinquish it.
Well, if I was a committee member and quit in the middle of the year, I wouldn't give it back.
I'd take it back, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you don't have the authority to take it back.
Yes, I do. They're no longer recognized.
Very true.
Well, if we don't think we need to put a sentence in there?
I guess we don't need it.
I'm fine with the way that it is.
I think you're wise in putting the sentence in, but whatever.
Are you saying we should take that out?
No, he's saying we should put it there.
Put a sentence in.
In there, that if they cease to be committee members.
Well, it hurt.
It doesn't hurt, I mean, it doesn't affect it.
That way they'll be forewarned.
Yeah, and if it happens, you can say, whoever asked for it back and say, hey, it's right in the bylaws.
Add it, I think so. It doesn't hurt, it clarifies. Clarification's always better.
It's like giving them a key, actually, to the place. When you leave, you turn your key back, yeah.
Correct. Okay, so that's it.
So let's, so the amendment will be to that.
Can you make up the sentence, Georgiana? Just, we're going to ask for it back if, they must relinquish it if they, upon resignation from the committee.
A member of it, yes.
You could just say, "Recognized committee members shall receive an annual combination voting and parking pass for so long as they are a committee member for the purpose of visiting and inspecting the facilities."
Beautiful. Of course, of course.
Did you get that, George?
For so long as they are committee members.
Yeah.
That works. That's why we have that wordsmith attorney over there.
Yep.
The last thing I have is on ad hoc committees. You didn't list Botanical Garden. I have a feeling it's going to go on for a few years, just until the gardens really get going and a committee gets...
Is that an ad hoc committee?
Yeah, it's an ad hoc committee.
Yeah, that's a, that's not an ad hoc committee.
Oh, it's a standing committee? Oh, I didn't know that. It's not up understanding.
See, ad hoc is just for one thing.
Okay, well, that's what, can we put Botanical Garden?
It's actually a PID committee though.
It's not even, it's not a PID committee.
So that's probably the reason why it's not...
That's the reason it's not in there.
It's a, went down.
It's a rec district committee.
I think you're right, Bill. I think it's an ad hoc committee deal because it's only going to be advising them insofar as, until the park is done.
I don't have any vote on anything, nor does PID, but I'd like to go to the meetings as the PID representative.
You can do that.
And talk to them and show what the PID, tell them what PID would like to see out of.
But you don't need to be on a committee to do that.
Well, it's not an ad hoc committee, but the title says ad hoc slash other committees, so I don't have a problem if you'd like to add it.
I would think you would be, Bill, because let's go back to our Lake Committee, which we, even though we couldn't remember all of them, Darrell is here on behalf of Fire Safety Council, and the Parks and Rec person is here representing them. So he'd be representing PID.
PID on a Park and Rec Committee.
Committee, right.
Yeah.
It's not a PID committee.
No.
So the recommendation is?
Dustin just said, put it under the ad hoc committee, other committees under ad hoc.
As other committees. Do, we list it?
Aren't we limited in time on an ad hoc committee?
I would just, I would consider it another committee.
Other committee.
Okay, this is the, the ad hoc slash other.
Yeah, correct.
Technically not a committee of the district.
Right, thank you, okay.
So that's 210, put Botan, Botanic there.
Okay, then I'll go back because I was a little, let's see, there was no debate on the first part of B.
88.
At 2.19, going back to the beginning. "The president of the boards may form ad hoc committees composed of board members for such purposes they deem appropriate. Ad hoc committees shall be comprised of less than a quorum of directors, be limited in duration, and have no continuing jurisdiction."
That, that language, Bill, comes from one of my opinions.
Okay.
About a year ago, that the president of the board, then sitting president of the board, has the ability to establish ad hoc committees. And then the second sentence is kind of defines what an ad hoc committee is.
Right.
That it needs to be composed solely of a less than quorum of directors, so in other words, you can't have a public member on an ad hoc committee. That it needs to be composed solely of a less than quorum of directors. So in other words, you can't have a public member on an ad hoc committee. It has to be of limited duration and have no continuing jurisdiction. So it has to be kinda formed for a discrete purpose.
Okay, and I have no objections.
You say that you cannot have a public member on it.
Right, that turns it into a standing committee and you have to comply with the protocol.
Only the president can form, I'm sorry, Bill. Only the president can form an ad hoc committee, not the board.
Technically, two, two directors, because an ad hoc committee does not need to comply with the Brown Act. So two directors can say, hey, let's form a committee on Paradise Dam enlargement. And those two directors could go to town. You know, as long, at some point, if it becomes recognized.
That sounds pretty good, though.
So, but, so technically, it's not just the president, but if you want the district to recognize the committee as an ad hoc committee, then it should be.
The board members would come to the president.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you want to be, the, two directors.
No, I, I would discourage that because there's, you know, the temptation is there to.
Well, plus the fact.
Temptation's not the right word.
We get paid for going to an ad hoc committee.
Right, that doesn't sound right.
And there's two directors saying, hey, I need an extra hundred dollars. So we'll form an ad hoc committee and get an extra hundred dollars.
See, it's actually duplicated under two twenty B, number.
Three.
Three, the president of the board shall appoint members of ad hoc committees.
I would actually strike that.
Well, one strike.
It's in the wrong section, I think.
Three, so I wanna take three out.
In two point two.
In two point two. Okay, then number two in three point two, committees assignments shall only be changed during the calendar year by a majority vote of the board. This is something new. We've never done that before.
And that's what we were just.
But that gives us flexibility when we have problems is why we're putting it in, why we're suggesting.
Like Larry said, in case we had a director.
Got sick or something?
Yes, just got sick, was unable to fulfill their commitment to it, then the board could.
To Nicaragua.
By a majority vote. I was leaving that out, but by a majority vote. By a majority vote could then change.
That's a very good feature. And it also keeps the president from eliminating a person off the board just because they disagree.
Sure.
I see that committee, you mean.
Of a committee, yeah.
President of the.
Without a board.
Number four is the last one I have checked here and it says, the president of the board may appoint a replacement committee member. If a committee member is unable to fulfill their duties, no meeting of the committee has taken place without board of directors being updated, a committee in meeting. So this is what we talked.
That was for the, that's what's come out of when, because we wanted an alternative. Remember, we talked about having an alternative member? I think that's what's come out of it.
What numbers you have?
If someone was.
But I would like to see alternative members appointed at the time.
Okay.
So that the guy knows that he's the alternative member in case he's needed. That's what we do with LAFCO. We have alternative members for every member.
For the standing committees, you mean, have one alternative member?
Right.
For the committee, not for both members, though.
Alter.
No, just one alternative commit.
Alter the committee, alter the members.
Alternative.
The president of the board would still be the one that.
That does it.
That appoints that, so that, that sentence still works.
Right. It's just like, to me, all our committees should have two directors, Adam. And if somebody can't make it, well, then the other guy should fill in.
Okay, so why don't we change three instead of the, because we were gonna eliminate that, why don't we make that the sentence?
Well, just, just a moment. You're, you're wrong, Dustin. Uh, we can't, we can't get rid of two point two zero B three. It needs to be in there.
Two point two?
Well, I think he was saying move it up into.
No, that's where it should be.
Committee.
You form, you form the committees in two point one nine, you populate them in two point two zero. If you'll see, it, it says, you know, the conform.
That's the appointment, the committee members.
Yeah. No, the, the committees are formed in two point one nine.
Exactly, so.
The board forms the standing committees and the president forms ad hoc.
You're right, the appointment of the committee members.
And then down below, it says the appointment for standing is by the president. And if you don't, if you don't then say the president appoints the ad hoc committee members, that's kind of left undone.
My, my point was, it's really in the wrong place.
Where, where do you want?
Two point two zero, I, I would, if you really wanted to make this crystal clear.
Formation and population in the same place?
Yes, formation of ad hoc, population of ad hoc, same place. Formation of standing, population of standing in the same place.
Okay, so that would be two point.
Kinda huddled them together.
Two point one nine.
C.
B one, B, B one.
What's B one now? I'm confused.
No, it's not on there yet. That's what he's saying.
I would move three to either be included in two point one nine B.
You also have to move two.
To?
Same thing.
Point two?
Yeah. Two point two zero B two. Uh, excuse me, B one. So B one and B three are the same thing. Those are populating statements.
Well, see, if you go back to B one and you don't change it, it used to, it was there, you change it only in the first regular meeting in January. President of the board shall appoint members of the various standing committees, it says there, which would mean ad hoc and standing committee, rather than just making it standing. Then you have another one saying the president shall appoint members of that ad hoc committee. If you say committees, it takes care of that ad hoc. It's defined up above in two point one nine B. And then just have, just strike out the standing and say committees again.
If you, you can't have it done that way because the only time the, the president populates the standing committees is, um, as it says.
Jan, first meeting.
At the first regular meeting in January.
Right.
An ad hoc committee may not be formed until June. And if it's formed in June by the president, then it needs to be populated in June. And so if you, that's why you have to have a separate statement about populating the ad hoc committees, I think. Unless, like.
Well, for, for years, we've been getting by with the other one. An ad hoc committee comes up and president, president appoints, even a new committee was, a standing committee was made this summer in the conservation.
Yeah, but didn't you, you were the one that said, the president can't do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yes, you did.
Okay, well, whatever.
You're saying the board had to do it.
The board had to do it.
This is.
And that's why we've gone in and clarified this.
That's why we're doing this because that, because the president does appoint the ad hoc committee. And he doesn't have to do it in a meeting.
See, I, I mean, if, if we were to make this perfect in my mind, there's still some ambiguity, which I think what, which led to your point earlier. Earlier being when we first discussed ad hoc committees. Two point two zero is titled committee of, committees of directors. Well, but then you talk about other committees that may have public members as well. And then A talks about standing committees and B just talks about appointment of committee members. So there's a, it's, it's a little bit ambiguous in how it's organized. I, I mean, I.
It is.
It, it could be better, but, I mean, I think, I think everybody understands what's intended and that's the main point.
Well, see, it, the part of it is appointing standing committees. In there, they say the board may assign the committees such tasks as the board may determine and delegate any committee certain powers and authority of the board to transact any of the business affairs of the board, subject to the board's final approval. Well, to me, that means if you take the standing out, it meant ad hoc committees too, the board appointed them. And then the president, you know, I, I just think that we're making things a little more difficult. They're not as flexible as the existing rules are. They're trying to, to get it right in there and I'm going, well, wait a minute, what happens if this happens, that happens? There's very little flexes in it and.
But remember, one of the reasons for, the theory why you need an ad hoc committee that's not subject to the Brown Act is flexibility. So if there was an issue that came up tomorrow, rather than calling a special meeting, the president could call an ad hoc committee. He could flesh it out and then that committee could be prepared to give a thorough recommendation at the next meeting. So under your scenario where the board would have to appoint an ad hoc committee, you would lose that flexibility.
Without calling a special meeting to.
You'd need to call a special meeting to appoint the ad hoc committee and then.
Yeah, we don't want that.
No.
But I think it too, you brought up a point that I hadn't missed before. Public members cannot be on ad hoc committees. I think that should be spelled out here somewhere that I didn't know about.
It is in.
I didn't know that either.
Two point one nine B.
Is it? Does it say there?
The second sentence.
Oh, okay.
Directors.
Where is?
Two point.
Says board members, ad hoc committee.
Shall be comprised of a quorum of directors, so that automatically does not include.
Public members.
Shall be comprised of less than, and will be limited, yeah, but it doesn't say that it, that public people are, it just says. You can only have two committees, two directors.
Doesn't say Martians either.
Yeah, I know, yeah. But it says it'll be comprised of less than a quorum of directors.
Right, but I think it ought to be spelled out that because of, because it is an ad hoc committee, public members cannot be appointed to an ad hoc committee. Because I didn't know that. I'm sure a lot of people won't know that.
I don't think we need to spell it out, though, Larry.
Really?
Because it, it says what it can be and that's, that's, it's defined. It's not, you know, the reasoning that goes behind it isn't, isn't displayed, but it's effective.
Well, your writing bylaws may be used for the next ten years before somebody gets around.
I think, you know, if you just put only in there, it'd be okay. An ad hoc committee.
Only.
Shall be comprised of only less than a quorum of directors. And that tells you that they, nobody else.
Between committee and shall, an ad hoc committee shall only, or excuse me, between shall.
Yeah, anywhere in there, just the one word.
Shall only be comprised of less than a quorum of directors.
Would solve it all, I think.
So why don't we put only in between shall?
Good with me, Larry. Good by me.
Okay. Ken, I'd like to make a motion, amendment to the motion, that we include the changes what we agreed to, hopefully. Georgian has kept track.
Georgian's got them all.
Got them all. And to the original motion.
I'll second that.
If we.
I'm not clear on what, all the things we've agreed to.
Oh, you haven't?
Because Bill was talking an awful lot about things in here and I don't know whether he's backed off on them or we're just going to get, okay, well.
Can we go back, my question was gonna be, can we go back in and change this?
If you see.
If what we read.
I have three changes that I've tracked.
Two point two one C.
Right, where?
I have.
The general manager or the committee chair to suggest adding a statement that meetings may be called by the general manager or by the committee chair as necessary.
Yes, right. That's the one for two point two zero C.
Yes, which we can.
And then two point two one C.
There was no changes there after we talked about them?
Kevin, can you go to that page?
Paradise committee never shall, or as long as they are committee members, receive an annual combination voting and parking pass for the purpose of visiting and inspecting the facilities.
That is okay.
And then the third change would be the one I just made.
My concerns were.
Right.
Or something on it, oh, we need to have it for the, that only board members. When they get off the board, they can't continue. That has to be.
That language.
Off the committee.
Change that to be.
It's a board.
Only.
I'm sorry, off the committee.
Shall only be, is the way it should be. Yes.
Those are the three changes I have. May I make another suggestion? Just, this will help clarify a little bit for the future reader. Change the title of two point two zero from committees of directors to just committees of the district. That way it's a larger umbrella that encompasses ad hoc committees as, as well as standing committees with.
With public members.
Committees of the district, huh?
Committees of what now?
The district.
Of the district.
Of district instead of directors.
Just committees of Paradise Regains District.
Okay.
So we're leaving two point one nine A and B as it is?
With the exception of adding only.
Okay, that's correct. And two point two zero, are we?
Change the name.
A, B, are we leaving A and B in their subcategories as they are shown?
Right now, that's how I.
You wanna add that change to your motion? Dustin just gave.
Oh.
What change?
Well, I mean, it covered all the changes, so I think the motion covers Dustin's change.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as it does. Then my second stance.
Yeah. I'll just call for the question. I don't have any more, so.
Okay. Is there anybody else on the board that would like to discuss this? You good?
Director Kell, I have to approve the amendments.
Yes.
Right. I did.
Okay, all in favor as the amendments as presented? All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes five zero. All.
One further, adding the Botanical Garden to ad hoc slash other committees, two point two two. I think that was.
We forgot.
Yeah, that was one. That was, that was one. It would've been in Bill's motion.
Yeah, are we all okay that that?
Yeah, that was in the.
Thank you, Dustin.
Okay. All in favor of approving the, can you go back to page eighty-eight or wherever we started at?
Eighty-eight.
Uh, to adopt the changes to two point one nine through two point two two policy manual as amended, all in favor, say aye.
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 Passes five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
A smooth dance, but we got through it.
Tripping a little bit there. Okay, item number eight A, new business, customer feel from Jerry Metcalf Review and George, maybe we should hold off. From George, or do you know the specifics on this, Kevin?
Let's hold off.
Okay.
He shouldn't be here in ten minutes.
So I'm gonna skip item eight A and same thing with item eight B. I'm going to skip item eight C. I'm going to skip until George is here.
This is a good one to go to anyhow, to the next PID rules.
It looks to me like we need to take a, a ten minute break and wait for George.
Well, we can go down to D. Do we, do we need?
Let's do E. That's a no-brainer. You do it every year.
Okay, let's go to E. I like that. I was gonna say, it looks like George has got a place in there. So, item eight E, new business, transmital of delinquent water charges to Buick County. Consider adopting board resolution number two zero one three dash oh six, transmitting delinquent water charges to the Buick County Auditor Control Board as amended in the.
Are we on E or D? Are we going to D or E?
E.
Okay.
As we have seen in the amended total, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, was at fourteen four six nine and then went up to fourteen five twenty-nine and change?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll move to. It's a resolution. You gotta read it somewhere.
I moved to adopt resolution number two thousand thirteen oh six.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in, is there anybody?
I want discussion.
Okay, yes.
Why don't we put their names on these? So some places put their names on them so these people feel bad about it.
Because we're, because we're not attaching to the name or attaching to the parcel, so that's why.
Well, some places put the name so that they.
It's like a scarlet letter. We just don't do that.
We don't do that. We're nice, we're nice.
Like, like I tell our customers when they come in and complain, we're not here to ruin people's lives. That's what I tell them.
We're here to give you good water.
That's right. We're, we're here to run a business.
I just wanted it for the record, why we didn't.
It has nothing to do with the Privacy Act. It's just that we're being nice. We're just being nice again.
Yeah, there's no Privacy Act when it comes to ownership name. It always surprises me how some of the little tiny ones just don't get handled, twenty-three dollars and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. Is there anybody from the public that would like to?
A lot of times these get cleaned up before they actually go. A lot of these get cleaned up before they actually get attached to the property tax. But we have to get them in early enough so that they can do their paperwork to get them on there, but we'll continuously update this list for them.
Oh.
Before they send it off, so. We put it on, we, we kind of blanket everybody that's at a certain delinquency and as they clean them up, then they get taken off.
Okay.
Is our person from eight A on this list?
Um, yeah. I believe so.
I believe I saw a total that was looking close to it. I think it's maybe. I thought it was in page one, about one-third of the way down.
Wasn't it like six hundred dollars or so or?
Six thirty-one ninety-eight.
Yeah, there's another two zero on there, too.
Okay.
I don't.
Any other discussion? Directors, no? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, excuse me, roll call vote on that, please, because it's a resolution.
Director question?
Yes.
Director Henn?
Yes.
Director Kell?
Yes. Yes.
Director Abner?
Yes.
President Kellup?
Yes. Passes five zero.
I can handle.
The F?
F, yeah.
Okay, we'll go to item eight A in new busi- or eight F, excuse me, in new business.
So this is, this is a document that is created for the transfer of the retirement plan from ICMA to Securities America, who uses FTJ funds for their retirement accounts. Basically, what they did was, we have two retirement accounts. We have a four fifty-seven and we have a four oh one A. They took the document that was created for the four fifty-seven that the board adopted with ICMA and just basically transferred it over. So there was no change to that document. They couldn't do that with the four oh one A. They had to come up with their own document and go through it. So that's why you guys are seeing it today. So this is basically their direction on how the four oh one A will be handled. Just to let you, to remind the board on what the four oh one A is there for, is that each employee gets nine percent in their retirement account for, with, with no match, no nothing into the four fifty-seven. If the employee decides to match or to contribute up to three percent of their own income, then the district will match that, up to that three percent. When the employee takes their money and puts it into their retirement account, that money goes into the four fifty-seven. The district's match portion goes into the four oh one A. With that four oh one A, there are certain criterias established with that, which is a vesting criteria. So every year, that employee is vested twenty percent into that match portion that we have put in aside for them. After five years of service, then they are a hundred percent vested to that portion, that match portion. So a hundred percent of it is theirs, and it continues on throughout. So that's what this vehicle that you're going to, to adopt i- is doing is basically directing FTJ Fund Choice on how that money should be handled if circumstances happen, or how it's handled on a monthly basis, so. Do you wanna handle that? Uh, I, George and Sheila Latton, who's the IBW representative on behalf of the recognized employees. Her and George have been engaging in a back and forth email over the last month or so about this issue, and the latest email from Sheila, George asked me to respond, cause he's traveling today. So I called Sheila this morning. What, what she wanted to convey to, to the board was, there's a lot of employee confusion, there's some concern about this, is the board getting rid of its fiduciary obligation, which is not true, as I explained. There's also some trepidation about this thirty day blackout period, up to thirty days where no transactions can be conducted so that the funds could be transferred from the investment houses. So her, her request was that the board delay considering this to the August meeting. And, you know, I made no promises. I did try to explain to her that really the decision has already been made, and it was made a number of months ago. I also reminded her that the employees had had a number of opportunities in the last year or so to not only sit in on presentations from a number of potential providers, but also have training sessions from these providers, so. The short answer is there's still some confusion. I do have an email from her. I can circulate a copy of it if you'd like to read it. Basically, the operative paragraph is, I'll read it. From, from what I've gathered today, the main sticking point for our members is a lack of transparency in the entire process. I think if that can be addressed, along with some clarification with regards to the blackout window and further explanation on the fiduciary responsibility, it might go a long way. The blackout window is, as I said, thirty days. It's up to thirty days. In, in practice, and, and Kevin can speak to this, what the provider is telling us, it's more like four days. Four days in which you can't do anything with your investment. There is, maybe you ought to jump in, explain how some people could be locked in until next May.
Yeah, and what I've described is that plus fund, the sticking point of that plus fund, which we've all handled internally with each provider, is that if you are inside the plus fund, you will be with ICMA for up to, it's gonna be.
That email?
Kind of the end of May is when those, those funds will be released. So an employee has up to July twenty-ninth to make a choice. Do I wanna stay in the plus fund, which means that money is going to be locked into that plus fund for the remainder of that year? Or do I wanna take it out of that plus fund, and then now it will be transferred over to FTJ Fund Choice, and then I have an opportunity to make whatever decision I want? These, this has been explained to every single one of our employees and every participant of the plan. We also have sent out notices to every one of the employees dated July twenty-seventh stating all of the, of what's going to be happening. And this is a requirement. This is a requirement that we're having in that.
July twenty-seventh?
We sent it out June twenty-seventh.
June twenty-seventh, you said July.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was like, I was like. What are you doing?
We sent it out weeks from now?
No, June twenty-seventh, and it states that the blackout period will begin on July twenty-ninth. It says this may last up to thirty days. It, it's to, to allow us some flexibility. So we're not locking ourselves in. If something happens where we're having to reconcile something, this or this, or something happens, we have some time to do it. But in all likelihood, it's going to happen within approximately four days. It's liquidating all of the funds into cash, taking those funds over into FTJ Fund Choice, and then distributing those funds into each person's account based on the direction that they've given, Rick Moots, the investment advisor, which Rick has sat down with every employee and discussed where they wanna go. They've signed up all their accounts. And so there's specific direction that's been given based on that. I think that from my perspective, we've been as transparent as we possibly can. We're not gonna tell every employee about the administration of how we're trying to get this thing transferred over. I think that that would be, I don't think that's a reasonable expectation.
Which is essentially what her email is asking for.
That's, that's correct. I think that we've been very open to every employee about choosing, selecting, and about the process that, that will take place. And I think that we've empowered every employee to make the best decision for themselves. Even going further to say that there are certain investment options that if you wanted to take it out of the plus fund, you couldn't put it in ICMA's certain funds. We've, we've explained that to them also, that there's certain funds that you cannot transfer your money out of the plus fund if that's where you wanted to take that money, put it into another account, and then distribute it out. So I think that we've, we've done a, a, a good job of, of trying to inform all of our employees. We are always open to questions from employees, and we'll answer every question that comes our way. But I don't think it's, it's necessary to delay action at this point from the transfer. Right now, all it is, is an administrative type of thing. We're, we're trying to administer this transfer the best way that we possibly can, and I think it's, it's, we've done, we've done our due diligence.
I have one question, Kevin. This is someplace where I don't have much knowledge, but I was wondering on the trustees, you have George and yourself, and I thought the board was the trustees for employees' retirement funds.
The, the district is the trustee, but there has to be specific members that are, that are the trust, the quote unquote trustees of, of the funds, meaning they're making decisions on how things are, are handled kind of administratively. I don't.
Employees have a say on where the money, their money goes?
There's certain things that, we don't have a say on how the money goes, but if an employee, say, wants to take an emergency withdrawal, you know, there's certain administrative things that we have to do. If an employee wants to take a loan, there's a certain administrative things that we have to do, and there has to be somebody that is responsible for, for signing those documents and for, or making sure that the administrative thing's handled. But do I have a, a say on how someone invests their money? Absolutely not. Never, never do I have that. But there is certain administrative things that we as members of the district have to make, and I don't think, I think that as us as trusted individuals of the district, I think that that's probably the most efficient way to handle it.
I was looking at vesting for employer contributions.
Yes.
Page one twenty-two, and we've checked number three.
Yeah.
Five-year graded, one-year twenty percent, two-years forty, three-years sixty, four-years eighty, five-years a hundred percent.
Correct.
Can you explain to me what that means?
That means that because the money that we're setting aside into this account is the money that the, the district has put in there, it means that the employee doesn't get that just right off the top. It means that we're looking for some service to, for them to earn that money over the time period, and this is actually a negotiated step earning par- parcel of this. So let's say we put a thousand dollars in there for them. The first year, they've earned two hundred, the next year, they have four hundred, the next year, they have six hundred, the next year, they have eight, and so on until five years. Then they have that full thousand dollars that they can then take with them and, when they retire.
Well, when they're, when they have five years of service, then everything that goes in the account is a hundred percent vested.
Correct.
Oh, it's not ladder down. The second year's donation doesn't have a five-year lifespan, the third year's donation.
It's a total of five.
Okay. So five years, and they're a hundred percent vested.
That's correct.
What happens to the money if they leave it to you?
It's forfeited, and it's, and then in here, in this document, that's another thing of the administration of this document. It says what we as a district can do with that money. And so you can offset contributions, or you can pay fund ex- or you can pay expenses inside of there.
You know, I, I realize all the work you've done to explain this to the employees, and I'm glad you have, but looking through this thing in its fine print, and I'm going, I was just looking for where the X's were, but. Uh, anyway, I just go and. I can understand their fears or worries, and I don't know how to correct them, other than putting them all in one room and explaining it to you in layman's language.
Most of the.
Asking and having them ask you questions.
Most of the, the, the documentation in here is for the administration of the plan.
Right.
The nuts and bolts, like the five-year vesting and all that, is, is a negotiated item that they should be very well aware of through their union, for the union negotiating that, those items for them.
I did some research on this myself. In fact, I met with Kevin, and I did some other look at it because of the fact that I didn't completely understand the first time doing this, and the four fifty-seven, the nine percent goes into that. And if they're only here a month, whatever's put in, that's theirs.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent of it. But on the vested, I understand vesting in the, if they're here one year, and they got twenty percent of that thousand dollars you were talking about, that would be theirs.
That's correct. That's correct.
But they have to be here for five to be invested, you know, and I've invested, I've invested in a couple of ways, well, anyway, as I understood it in some of that research, the staff was pleased with this move to Securities America. That's what we're talking about, right? The Securities America. And now I'm hearing that their representative from the collective bargaining unit, which it is, right? Is unsure. Now, is that person from the union's headquarters, are they part of the staff here?
She's, she's a representative or employee of the union.
Okay, yeah.
But you've made a good point. She, she's speaking on behalf of not every employee. I think there's employees, in fact, didn't you do some kind of vote?
Yes.
Employees, and so I think there's a lot of employees that are happy with the change.
Okay, this vote that you took with the employees, that's documented, right?
It was a survey. We took a survey of all the employees.
Okay, well, that's like a vote. It was a non, did they sign on the thing, or?
No, they could've, or they, they could not have.
Yeah, but it was anonymous.
It was anonymous.
But you have that down, so, and more than fifty percent agreed that we needed to go with this.
This is what I did, was I took the, I took, we did six different retirement plan providers. We had them all present to the employees. We took the top three to present to the board. The top three then was chosen, the number one was, the number one was chosen by the board based on all the facts that were given to the board, which was price, returns, fiduciary liability.
Fiduciary liability.
And, and the service, I think service, local service.
What are we doing with a fiduciary liability?
Fiduciary liability.
If we vote yea on this, what, what happens to it?
We've actually already voted yea on this. This is just the vehicle to facilitate the transfer.
Yeah, I understand that. Well.
So your fiduciary liability is actually, with, with FTJ Fund Choice, one of the things that was, was documented was that if you have a provider that limits the amount of funds that an individual can invest in, then the board must make sure those funds are the best performing funds for those individuals.
I understand that.
Okay?
They, like, in fact, I think you told me this, they have, Security American has seventeen hundred options or something like that.
That's correct. So they, they, they give you, they give you the full gamut, but they also offer other options available to you, meaning that you can take it to a, to a brokerage house, a big brokerage house, say, invest it for me. I don't even wanna think about it anymore. They're gonna make all the moves for it.
And if they use boots properly, he would do that.
Correct.
Or he would give them.
Yes.
The best advice that he could, and he gives good advice and awareness.
That's right.
And he has met with every employee.
He's met with every employee. The other thing too is education, and we, us, being, having Rick locally, we will have education for all the employees, and we will make sure that the, the FTJ Fund Choice or Securities America has a calendar that we are advising our, our employees the best way we possibly can.
As always, Kevin gave me some very good advice on this and really brought it up to date, but we didn't talk anything about the thirty day blackout. Now, let me ask, so I get this, on this thirty day blackout, there, and it moved from one firm to the another.
That's correct.
There's thirty days that that money may not be making a dime.
That's correct.
Okay. May only take four days or whatever. And the employees aware of that, that that, for that thirty day period, one-twelfth of a year, they may not be earning a dime.
That's correct.
Okay, and most of them are aware of that, or hopefully all of them.
They're also not losing a dime.
They're not losing a dime either. There you go, you know. So for, as we all know on the stock market, for everybody that makes a dime, somebody loses a dime.
That's right.
And they were all made aware of that when we made the choice also, I believe.
And, but we also documented it by sending this letter.
I was in on some of those observing from out here.
That was the, the.
That is a big.
Correct.
But getting back to this survey, Kevin, you've got it documented, the six of them that you did or whoever you did, that over fifty percent of the employees wanted to go with the change.
Uh, it wa- it wasn't so much of that. It was a documentation of how each one did, and they rated them one to, one to five. So the, the highest rated ones were the ones that I brought back to the board. The board then made the choice based on price, returns, uh, service, and fiduciary liability.
I'm sure that I've got, I've kept all the stuff, but I, of course, didn't bring it up here, but I remember discussing that when I was out there, and you were discussing it, and, and it was well done.
And every.
In fact, there was a couple of the employees here, more than that.
Most definitely.
They related to it in a positive manner.
Most definitely.
And by the way, I encourage Sheila to have the disgruntled or, or concerned employees come tonight. I don't know if we have any, but I don't know if this gentleman is an employee or not.
No.
So she did, that's one item in her email. She wanted to say that, basically explain away why nobody would be here.
Okay, well, I remember that there was a half a dozen employees, and a couple of them spoke against it, and a couple of them spoke for it, as I remember, you know, from this.
And this decision was made in January. This has been a long process, a long tedious process for us to get this thing administrative. Yeah, longer than that, but this, just this changeover has been a long tedious process, and I just don't think that at this time delaying this will, will solve anything.
I have a question for you in regard to the thirty day blackout.
Yeah.
Okay. What if you don't do it in thirty days? What if the transfer isn't made? What happens?
If it's made in thirty-one days?
Yeah, or thirty-five. What happens?
To be honest, I don't know what the, the result of that would be, other than you might have to start the process over.
That's a good point.
But there is no, and I, I printed off the federal register, and then it gives you all the detailed documentation about this. It's, it's very, there's a lot of exclusions and, and different things like that that offer availabilities for mistakes and this and that, and you have to kind of document them. But, but there actually is no limitation on your blackout period. It just says you have to state what your blackout period is. So we got advice from our, the investment advisor to say, okay, what, what, how much time do you think you're gonna need? And then let's give ourselves some cushion. And so I think the thirty day window is plenty of time for this to get done.
I think Kevin explained to it.
If there's no penalty or a problem, why don't we just tell the employees it's gonna be ten days, then make them feel better?
Because I don't wanna handcuff ourselves, cause I don't know what that thirty-one day. day option is going to be. The blackout is going to be the blackout whether you approve it tonight or a year from now.
Right.
If you make a change, you're going to have a blackout.
Did you get that thirty-day blackout from Security America?
That's correct. If you, if you do change the blackout date, then it means we have to start the process over.
It was explained to the employees.
Because we have to resend this out. And we have to send this out thirty days before the blackout date.
Well, then we should give it the plenty of cushion, like you said, and it'll be done in, in fewer days and then this'll settle down. We just need to move on with it.
That's my, that's my advice. The other point, for the record, you are still fiduciaries. You will always be fiduciaries of these plans. No matter what change you go to, you're always going to be fiduciaries. That's why you guys are approving this document and myself.
Because we're responsible for it.
Well, but we have to sign it, so we have some level of-
That's because you're our trustees.
Fiduciary also, right?
But, but you're giving us that ability to sign that document.
Yeah. Well, what percentage of centers do you think you have within the bargaining unit?
I think, uh, I, this is a complete conjecture. Uh, I think it's very small.
What's very small?
Very small.
I say-
Thirty, thirty-five, thirty-nine people in the group, right?
I say three.
About three?
That's my, that's my personal.
Okay.
What do you think?
I move with-
I, I think that we've gone way over, above and beyond to handhold the employees through this process.
Exactly.
It's time to move on.
I move we adopt resolution two thousand thirteen oh seven and authorize the general manager and finance and accounting manager to execute the money purchase plan adoption agreement together with supporting documents.
I second and call a question.
Roll.
You didn't ask if anybody out there-
Is there anybody from the public that had any comments on this?
Yeah, would you please explain the thirty-day blackout?
We'll call vote please.
Yeah, we've done.
Yes.
Yes. And we've done this one.
Yes.
Yes. Passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for explaining that to us.
Yes.
Um, yeah, but would I take, why don't we take a short six-minute recess? We'll reconvene at eight.
Got off the plane.
At seven fifty. Great idea. You like that one?
Threw my wife out of the curb.
We will re-adjourn, starting with item eight A, new business. Customer appeal from Jerry Metcalf, review and consider request to waive penalties and charges incurred.
What about the general manager's report?
General manager, thank you, Barry. We can do that. We'll go to the number five, general manager's report.
Get there and remind myself what I need to say.
Yeah, I, yeah. I was going to actually, I was trying to give you a couple of minutes, but.
Well, I, I do have a couple of things to add. One was the point I made in, um, my memo about, uh, some input from you on the grand jury report, but outside of that, a couple of other things, um, I did, I got a call a few weeks ago from our representative, um, or our engineer that's in charge of our area from DSOD. He was going to a meeting about, um, high-hazard dams and, and asked if we'd done an inundation study on our dams. And I told him we, we hadn't directly, it wasn't our influence, but we do have one that was done by the Butte Creek Watershed, um, Alliance or something like that. Um, so he was going to a meeting and wondered, you know, if we would be interested in, in, um, putting our dam up there for discussion, maybe have somebody come in and do a study for us. And I told him we'd be open to it. Well, I got a call last week from a lady from the office, the state office of emergency services and, uh, I'm going to have a meeting with her in a couple of weeks, asking if we'd participate because they need, they are looking for a high-hazard dam.
They got one.
That, uh, has no FERC interaction.
No what?
FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
Oh, that sounded like a bad word.
Because we don't generate power.
Power, I was just saying is that-
And most of the dams in the state have some type of FERC association and FERC has their whole rules about doing all these inundation maps, et cetera. And the bottom line is the state's probably looking to write a regulation for people that are non-FERC dams and so she's willing to work with us and we'd likely get all of, uh, our studies done with their assistance as they develop this program. And then when it turns into a rule that you actually have to do it, we'll be ahead of the game, so.
And that would result in probably, uh, no charge to the district or?
Far as I know, that's where it is at right now.
They're going to write a grant for us too?
No. No. Um, the other thing is the A-zone, we had some, um, difficulties over right before the Fourth of July, uh, with our A-zone pumps, you know, we've heard we've been having trouble with them. Well, the, in the extreme heat situation, we've had this problem in the past, the PG&E loads get imbalanced, so we have three legs of power that we need to, to run those high energy pumps. And when they get out of phase, it messes your pumps up. And so our pump, our electric pump kicked out and our gas pump, which is designed to take over when the electric drops out, failed also. So, um, kudos to all of the treatment plant staff guys. They worked diligently at it to get it going. Um, I was up in, in Oregon at the time talking to them from there. Uh, I gave them the go-ahead to get, um, a rental generator up there and a rental transfer switch. And so that, we've had that up there for a while. Um, they just got the gas pump running again in time, so we're prepared for the, the problem, but, um, we needed to have that backup protection, so that's been up there for a while. We got PG&E involved, they're trying to, um, improve the situation as best they can. It's going through their engineering studies right now and hopefully they'll have some type of remedy to keep those loads balanced when we come into these, um, high-energy demand periods in the future.
Is zone A pump station one?
Pump station two.
That's two.
That's two. Pump station two. And, you know, we also saw the, we knew this was coming, which the, the controls and et cetera to improve the gas pump were in the RFP and as you saw in Jim's memo, we've pulled that out and we're asking for your okay to get those repairs done, because as soon as they're up and running, as soon as those repairs are done and we're confident in the gas pump again, we can release that, uh, rental back to the vendor. So I don't know if it got approved in the-
Consent it.
Consent calendar or got pulled, but-
We got a small discussion.
That's what that was all about.
Okay. Right.
We had a little discussion on that and I, I mainly brought it out to compliment and it was Jim that wrote the specs on that. I thought they were all well done on the Murphy switch and, so I would take it twenty-five thousand, whatever it was, that's a very good buy.
Good investment.
The, uh, grand jury report will have to be on your agenda next month, um, as an action item. In the interim, begin thinking about whether you agree with the recommendation and the finding or whether you disagree with it in whole or in part and the reasons for that. Um, and then we can take action on it in August.
Those are the three points they asked us to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's-
It seemed to me like it was just pretty general whitewashed, broad stroke.
I was going to say, was there, I didn't see any like direct points.
Yeah, I'll, uh, if I can remind you, I was invited to speak to them several months ago and so I did that and I brought forward our strategic business plan, um, our urban, excuse me, urban water management plan, told them the situation, so what you're seeing in that report's pretty much what you already knew and information I shared with them. Um, I put it into my manager's report to give you a chance to give me some input instead of just blindly giving you, uh, something to review next or to approve next month.
You, you're, you're talking about on page eighty-three, requests for responses. It starts out pursuant to penal code sections nine thirty-three and nine thirty-three point oh five, the grand jury requests response, the recommendations as follows. Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, your response to findings of F-seven, F-eight and recommendation R-one. And F-seven is cooperating with Del Oro and F-eight is, um, distribution and storage capacities. And R-one's, um-
Staff will have some recommendations for us?
Yeah, we, we most certainly will. Just want to give you a chance to get your two sent in.
Good.
You so chose.
Well, there's not going to be anything new. This is, these are the programs that we have in place and we've been moving on and we're just going to let them see what our more specific plans are for their general concerns here, right?
But you're required to respond, so that response could be-
Sure. Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, that's why I read the penal code part.
Our responsibility, send money.
Send money.
Was there any other questions for George on his manager's report? Any questions from the public? Singular now with our other, we're down to two actually now? Okay. Uh, thank you, George, for that. Uh, new business eight A, customer appeal from Jerry Metcalf. Review and consider requests, waive penalties and charges incurred on a rental property at sixty-eight one-six Leoni Way. I expected that we would see this person here tonight, but I guess we are not. Um, I had, uh, do we have a motion or?
He, uh, I think he, he may have read the agenda with the recommendation.
I move to deny Mr. Metcalf's appeal.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
Is there, is there anything we could do that would keep this from happening in the future for anybody?
Encourage them to charge higher security deposits for their rentals.
Or, or pay the water bill themselves.
When, yeah, right. That's, I remember when I first started here, you, you couldn't have the tenant pay the water bill. It had to be paid by the, by the owner.
I was really-
When did that change?
Well, it had to be approved by the owner.
Well, our relationship's always been with the owner. But I don't know when it changed, but we've, as long as I've been here, we allow the owner to, um, provide a duplicate bill to their tenant and have the tenant pay the water bill.
Cause it seems like when I first got here, you couldn't do that.
Yeah, the other thing you should be aware of, that, that's always been practiced here for as long as I've been here and long before that, is, um, sometimes we get in situations where the landlord does pay the water bill and then they don't pay the water bill and the renters come in and want to know why the water's not on. And, uh, if they're willing to pay the water bill, we will turn it back on.
Yeah, we've had instances like that, I remember.
Oh, the landlord wanted them to move out.
That's one of their techniques for eviction.
Is that illegal?
Well, yes.
Yes.
Here's what I came up with is, is a customer can take tenants to small claims court to recoup payment for unpaid water bill consumption or water consumption bill, just like you would take for unpaid rent or damage to the property or anything else. That is his responsibility as the owner. And, correct me if I'm wrong, if we did any kind of action that involved a reduction of fees or penalties, wouldn't that not be considered a gift of public funds? Would we not be giving out the district's?
I think it's be more a precedent-setting issue. We have a lot of rentals and that, that's by the bigger-
Well, exactly, so.
Penalties wouldn't be giving away funds.
My recommendation for the owners would be for future tenants, I would consider including the water bill and the monthly rent, so this cannot happen. Water and garbage is included, whatever they want to do, but include it in and then if they want to go after them for an overage or whatever the case may be, then that's their responsibility. It's their property and that's part of owning a property. Right? So.
It's the way it's always been.
Any other discussion?
I just had a, a question about the, the plug that was in there, where you turned the water back on to be nice. And I know you mentioned that they could recover their costs because they had the plumber come out. Were we, did we leave the plug in there or how did the plug get in there?
Yeah, that was a mistake.
Mistake, okay. And you, you guys owned right up to it and if they turned the proper billing in, you were reimbursing for the plumber?
Yeah. Yes.
Perfect.
I really liked the, the fact that it looked like these people were just constantly tampering with this meter too.
And the plug's our last resort. I mean, it's our second to last resort. If the plug doesn't work, then we go dig up the main and turn it off there.
So, yeah, you actually, yeah, cut the, cut the line off, yeah, in there. So, yeah, I think that, and, and since the owner was being mer- made aware of all transactions, letters, everything, he was getting all the letters that they have tampered with the meter and they have tampered with it.
Well, he gets all the bills, I know that.
But it would show the tampering charges on there, so it's, yeah.
Do we send two bills to that, one to the owner and one to the tenant?
Yes. We charge a dollar to do that.
Okay. There's a fee for doing that stuff, so.
I don't know, George, the way that you calculate our man-hour charges for things like flipping a hamburger and whatnot, I'm surprised it's only a dollar.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
All in favor of denying the customer appeal? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Item eight B, Clark Road Dual Main Abandonment Project. George, regale us on this.
Okay. Let me, um, find a pointer so I can explain this one to you, although my recommendation might change everything, but I want you to know what's going on here. Caltrans is doing an overlay all the way from Highway seventy up into the intersection of Pearson and Clark. So it's going to come all the way down here, goes up on this direction to where the town's project's stopping and it goes up into here. What we were concerned with is there's two mains. There's a twenty-inch main that was put in, it's a cement mortar line and it was put in as part of, of a very large project the district did, I believe in the sixties to improve our water flow throughout the district. But there's a ten-inch main on the other side of this street that is, um, I think it was nineteen forties or fifties era and it's, all of the services for this section come off of that main. So what we were trying to accomplish was get this older main, although we have been having a lot of trouble with it, you know, as soon as they put an overlay over there, we're going to get a leak. That's just the way things work. And, um, so we were, we were going to relocate services so that, um, they came off of this newer main here and we were going to cut this off and abandon it at this point, so it's no longer connected in here and then we're going to cut and cap it or actually tie it back in and not cap it on this end, so that we continue flow on the twenty and the ten and we don't have a dead-end situation there.
Pass the overlay.
Pass the overlay.
Yeah.
Well, we were-
Or right at the overlay line.
Actually, if, if we were trying to get in right before and, and do it even, it's kind of right in that spot. So what, uh, what you got in your bids is we only got one bid. Construction is really ramped up. Um, most of our normal contractors just don't have the time to come in and knock this out at this time. And so we only got one bid, it's wider than we anticipated and, um, so I, my recommendation tonight is that you reject all bids and that we rebid this out, completely staying out of the, um, Caltrans overlay area, but our crews are already in the process of planning But our crews are already in the process of planning the two main things we got to get done out of the way. That's this service right here and cutting and capping that. That'll get us out of Caltrans way. Everything else we can still handle after their overlay is done without cutting into the new pavement.
That, yeah, that's exactly, we don't want to be the ones cutting into new pavement.
Right.
We have to get streets paved here.
The, uh, the town is supposed to do a micro overlay. And we'll, we'll work with them on their timing for that, although that's something we, we can cut in to potentially about.
That's sort of like a Mini Cooper?
It's kind of like thick paint, I think, but I don't know. So, any questions on that?
What is Caltrans planning on starting that? The reason I ask is because yesterday they put up a sign on my driveway where they're going to stop paving road construction and end of construction, that was just yesterday.
Started out.
It's, it's, that's what threw us. I mean, we were going through this process trying to get ahead of them and then they finished awarding their contracts. We were expecting end of August, they would be up here in this area. Well, what it turns out is next week, by next week more than likely, they're going to grind this whole intersection out and put a first lift of overlay in before they even start doing the rest of the overlays. Then they're going to jump all the way down to seventy and come up seventy with their overlay.
And leave the ground out all that time?
It'll be ground out and it will, but it'll be brought up to grade with a first, first layer. And these signal lights will be controlled by cameras instead of the inductive loops. And so this grinding's going to happen right away and so that kind of threw our, our, uh, our timing off.
How long will it take us to complete our cutoff and hook up to that?
Well, we've been.
They take them thirty days. We figured it'd take them two weeks at least, but to get them mobilized, contracted, mobilized, et cetera. Caltrans expects to have this done in thirty-five days.
Is that the gas station?
This is.
The old gas station?
Old gas station. This is Chevron.
Yeah.
Procyra.
Area.
So, um, they're doing a, what's a, what's called a rubberized asphalt overlay on, on the Caltrans road. So it takes a completely special equipment. They can't even make the mix up here. They have to bring special equipment in to actually make the mix with the rubber. And so once they start paving, they're not going to stop until they're done because it's, it's money.
So we got plenty of time to do what we got to do though.
Well, we're, he's going to do two night jobs to do these. This will take one night job, this will take another and then we'll have to jump in there and pave. We'll be able to do this after they do their first cut. We did work that out with them, their first initial overlay. We just can't do it when they, their final overlay is done.
I move we reject this bid.
All bids.
All bids.
All bids.
Do we want to include instruct staff to send it back out for RFP?
You'll have to, we're going to work through that.
I'll second that, Larry.
I'll put a question.
Any comment from the public? No? Any more discussion? No? Okay, all in favor of rejecting all bids on the Clark Road Dual Main Abandonment Project, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes five zero. Prop two eighteen, this is information item only, so let's, we're going to be going through this, so let's try to keep long discussions down to a minimum tonight.
Well, yeah, I was the one that asked George to put this on.
And then if I can just clarify, he asked me for us to be on the agenda.
Okay.
I asked Dustin for the input because.
And I read the thing.
Out of my league to be.
It looks very good to me and I know we're going to be discussing down the road this in more detail, so thank you for putting it on. Dustin, you were very clear about it and that's all I need to talk about.
So we're good on this?
It actually says on the agenda for information only.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there anybody else?
Still asking questions.
We could discuss it.
Any questions?
Questions?
We went through this here a while back, so.
Last time we went through a proposition two eighteen rate increase with our processes and procedures and public meetings. Do you feel anything is, are we reconsidering the law in any manner whatsoever or did we do it right and we're planning on?
No, we did it right. It's hard for me to see why you would ever do an assessment. Um, I think we're always going to be on the fee side of things in this district.
On the what side of things?
On the fee.
Fee, yes.
If you did some kind of capital facilities fee, you could do that also as an assessment. But why would you? Because it's more difficult to pass an assessment. So I think, you know, the only way you'd ever have um, an assessment is if you had some very unique project that only benefited a portion of your customers or benefited them in different ways. And I just don't see how that would ever happen. The, the typical example of when you use an assessment, in fact, I've got a meeting tomorrow night on this issue. A flood district. You know, properties that are in the flood plain versus properties that aren't, that are in the flood plain but aren't as subject, maybe in the, the hundred year flood plain instead of the twenty-five year flood plain. So the properties that flood more receive more of a benefit from improvements to levies. So they would be assessed more compared to properties that would flood less frequently. So that would be kind of a scenario where you'd have an assessment, there's disparate benefits on, on the parcels. And I just don't see you guys ever doing that. You're, we're likely to be in the fee arena. George wanted me to make sure that we're clear that these are only property related fees. So fees that you have for the lake, for example, you don't have to go through Prop two eighteen to increase those. There's kind of a quirk in the law that the Supreme Court issued two opinions two years apart. I can't reconcile them, but that's the state of the law. Capital facilities fees are not considered property related fees. They're not subject to Prop two eighteen. But the rationale for that is because it's voluntary. It's, it's a voluntary decision for a property owner to connect to the system. Yeah, okay, so it's two years later, there's a new Supreme Court decision and they say water service is a property related fee. It's, it's, it's an incident of property ownership. So, and one of the rationales for that is because water service is necessary to develop a property. It's, it's an integral component of property ownership. So those two don't make sense in my mind at least. So there's a lot of kind of interesting legal issues with Prop two eighteen. It's still, there's still a lot of cases on it. It's still relatively a new law. There will be changes. Most, I, I think most of the legal cases in the next few years will be on the initiative power. Which, you know, as I point out in my letter, it's kind of a scary proposition. Your, your customers can roll back any fee increase or any assessment. One open question is, well, how far can they roll it back? And they roll you back to where you basically cease to exist? That's, nobody's answered that, so and, and hopefully we won't be that entity.
Well, that fire thing that they did?
Yeah.
What's the deal on that?
That's currently before the Supreme Court. It's a very interesting case. It's, it's the third DCA case, which is the troublesome case for local public agencies, was written by a judge named Butts. She's from Nevada County and appeared before her before she, uh, became a, an appellate court judge. I think very highly of her, but I think she really screwed up assessments on the Prop two eighteen. Basically what she said was, these have to be special assessments, so they have to specially benefit the parcels. It cannot be a general benefit. So a fire, the, the issue in the case was a fire assessment for fire emergency services. And she basically invalidated it because it provided a general benefit, right? I could be driving through this neighborhood that has this fire assessment and if I need emergency services, I'm going to get the benefit of it, but because I'm not a landowner in that district, I'm not paying the assessment. So she, if you apply that rationale to other assessments such as parks or sewer, not, I mean, to a lesser extent sewer, um, even some water assessments. If you carry that logic forward, it's, it's hard to see how many assessments could be legal. So thankfully the Supreme Court granted review and hopefully they'll correct the decision. But, but, you know, that's, that's something that your district doesn't have to worry about. Because as I said, we will unlikely to be ever dealing with assessments.
That deal with drought water, that wouldn't be in the, what, that's a fee?
I think that would be a fee because if, let me, let me contrast two projects. If you had a drought water project that only benefited a certain segment of your customers, that's hard for me to imagine, but then it may be an assessment. However, any drought supply your project you're talking about is going to have a benefit to all your customers. So it's more likely in the fee arena. So the, the processes are different as I, as I wrote in my letter. Both involve starting the process with the notice, forty-five day waiting period, a public hearing. The one big difference is, well, two things. First, you need an engineer's report for an assessment, which is, is pretty costly. For most projects, it's in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range. For the more complex assessments, it's much more expensive. The other difference is for assessments, you need a fifty percent plus one vote. Whereas fees, you need to not receive a majority protest.
Reverse.
So it's a much easier standard to pass fees.
What I ask this to be on for my clarification, I figured we'd only be doing fees.
We will likely be doing fees.
Has there been no change since we did our last one?
No.
No new court cases or anything?
Not, there have been more court cases, but nothing that has changed the process for you. You know, the one point of caution I would give you is if we were to do a fee for a particular project, I would caution against that. Because as I write, you don't want to handcuff you, handcuff yourself. If for whatever reason the process doesn't, the project doesn't get built, you want to be able to use those fees that you've collected for other district purposes. So that's why you describe, if, if you want to have a, a fee increase for the process water project, we would say that the, the fee increase is for the process water project and other district purposes, including other possible drought relief project. So you list all the things that it may be used for.
So you aren't handcuffed.
Yeah, so that if for some unforeseen reason you don't actually construct that project, then you are free to use the funds for other district purposes.
I thought you did a great job explaining that.
It's a complicated law. It's, and there's, as I said, there's still a lot of court cases that are kind of fleshing out some of the problems. It's, it's an initiative and every initiative that's written in California is horribly drafted. So it's going to take a lot of, I mean, it's.
Don't sugarcoat it or anything like that. Cause I'm looking at it thinking about the fee increase, uh, it would be on every meter, every installation, you know, so.
Well, if, if you had a project like the process water recycle project, that benefits every customer.
Yeah.
So it makes sense to have a uniform fee for everybody. So it's, uh, Prop two eighteen is, is one of those full employment for attorney acts. It's very ambiguous, complex, gotta sue, sue, sue to figure it out.
You got a little chunk over this side.
Yeah.
Sure enough.
Did quite well explain it though.
If there's no other questions, let's go ahead and move on to item eight D. Thank you Dustin for that also. Um, PID rules and regs, so I believe now that we adopted back at the beginning there, in seven A, all we need to do is basically.
We've got some input on this one. Dustin.
Yeah, these two.
That's chapter four.
Yes, chapter four.
Yeah, we have an email from Dustin.
Oh, you got that email, okay.
Yes, I was just saying, yeah, we're.
Did you send out?
While you were gallivanting around, we were, we were up to speed on this, you know.
So, uh, do you want me to?
Yep.
Start, all right. Actually Paul Manassia, my business partner, helped me out with this. One of the things I had said in passing a number of months ago was there's some cases out there that seem to suggest that a vote in abstention is actually a vote in favor of the majority. It's an affirmative vote. So I think Ken probably planted that somewhere deep in his brain and remembered it and decided to implement that through a policy. And I, I think, uh, that's okay to do if, if that's what the board would like to do. The one point of caution I had, and, and I mentioned this to Paul, was, well, what if, what if a director is abstaining because they have financial interest in the, in the vote? And I didn't want some clever director saying, I abstain, but then having the effect of that abstention being a vote in favor of the majority. I, I just wanted to kind of protect you from that possibility. So Paul, uh, originally wrote this example, which I, uh, redrafted at George's request and that's in my email. That's the second part of my email. The first part of my email is, Larry, what you mentioned earlier.
Right.
This is four point one B, page one oh five. Special meetings can be called by the board president or by a majority of the board. So I suggested that change. And then the other change I suggest is basically striking that new example on page one oh eight and inserting the, the language I suggested.
Can we go up to one oh eight so we can see that? Thank you.
One thing that I found interesting in the court case that Paul Manassian gave us, gave me to look at earlier was the Board of Supervisors that was in this lawsuit had a rule that stated that abstentions were, um, I don't remember what it was, but they weren't affirmative votes. And the court said, doesn't matter what your rules say. This is what the law says. An abstention is an affirmative, is cast as an affirmative vote.
I should say that the rules that kind of have developed this body of law are pretty old. There's not any real recent cases on it. Paul's got a case, ongoing case in, um, Shasta County. It's against the Shasta County Board of Supervisors. So we may, a couple of years, we may get some new law.
We see some changes, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, so as board president, if you had a vote and there was an abstention from it, then how would you call that?
Depends on what the abstention is for. If the abstention is because.
Let's say no conflict of interest.
No conflict of interest.
No monetary gain.
You, you, you would report it as, you know, two ayes, two noes, one abstention.
Passed.
Motion passes because the abstention counts as an affirmative.
Okay.
And you'd probably cite your policy.
I'll still, I'll still ask you.
If it's a conflict of interest, what happens?
If it's a conflict of interest.
Then it counts as a.
Then it's a true abstention as if that person is absent unless the, the vote is required as a matter of law. And there's actually a code provision on this. I didn't come up with this. The, the code provision says if a board member's vote is required as a matter of law, so that, I don't know what that means, but, so one idea I have on what that means is if you're considering condemnation, you need a, a four fifths vote. So if you've got one guy absent and you need to vote on that, then you can abstain. So that, so that's one example possibly of what that means, that, that your vote is legally required. If you try to abstain as a result of an economic, uh, uh, conflict, then the code section says you can actually set aside your abstention and vote. In the way I've written the email.
This is a, a legal requirement.
It's an email. It's an email, right?
Yeah. It's the, uh.
I think I had it earlier.
It's the last paragraph, Bill.
Thank you. Last paragraph.
And, um, I'll just read it for the benefit of everybody. Notwithstanding the foregoing, so this is being inserted in, in place of that example.
So this one, this blue, green, that one.
Goes, what he's got there goes in.
Good, because that one had a mistake in it. I was going to bring your attention. Okay.
It's my fault. You should have seen the one I got from Paul Manassian. I tried to take his and make it understandable, so if it had a mistake, I believe.
So I don't even get to bring up my mistake because we're going with this new one here.
Okay, what happens if the director gets up and walks out of the room?
And does, just doesn't say anything?
Doesn't say anything, just leaves the room.
I would say that's an, just an abstention and the vote is, it's considered a vote in favor of the majority.
If you have a conflict, you're supposed to leave the room anyway.
Excuse me.
That would be, recuse yourself from it.
You keep saying that and that's what I object to. Because what if the majority was, were no votes?
Yes. That's, it's a vote in favor of the majority, unless there's a deadlock, then it's considered an affirmative vote.
If it's two, two and one abstention, then it's three, two.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to abstain in.
Oh, no, I can't, when there's three people.
So this abstention vote could be either a yes or a no, depending upon the count. And it will go with the majority, so if the majority was a, uh, two noes to one yes. then this abstention is going to be a no?
Two noes, one yes, yeah, then it would be a, a no.
That would be on the premise that one director's missing.
Then if they invent a deadlock, say it's two-two, then it's a vote, it's an affirmative vote.
Affirmative.
Yeah, I thought I read back here where it said that an abstention is a vote in the affirm.
That's the way I wrote it.
Yeah.
And that's why I sent it to, Paul read that, he didn't change it to vote with the majority.
But he did in his example, right? Will he treat his vote with a majority?
Yeah, he did it as an example.
In that case, yes. But he didn't have a problem with the other one being an affirmative.
Well, that's my understanding of it is, and maybe that just slipped by Paul, I don't know, but.
What constitutes an abstention?
Well, we could define it. I, I think an abstention is a refusal to vote.
What if you, what if you hear half the case and then you leave, leave, have to leave?
I think that's an abstention or it may just be an absence. You just, you don't consider them as a, as a voting party.
So that's, I think that's, I think that's a sticking point.
I don't think, there's, this is, this isn't legally defined, by the way, this, what constitutes an abstention. This is, this could be filled in through policy changes if you wanted it. I mean, you can kind of drive yourself crazy at some point trying to cover every possibility, but. Because a director could, if he didn't want to vote on it, just leave. Yeah, I mean, I.
But that's not an absence, that's a leave.
But that's, but a director could have.
If you left, you're absent.
But okay, no, well, no, let's say I'm sick, I'm absent the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't walk out.
But what if you get sick in the middle of the meeting?
I'm sick just as this thing came up.
Yeah.
I would say if, if the director leaves, they're gone. This is just my opinion, it's not a legal opinion. If the director leaves, vote's taken, comes back in, that's an abstention.
Exactly.
If they leave and do not return from the balance of the meeting, that's an absence.
If you're caught in a conflict of interest and it's a tight vote, then you can, instead of abstaining, you'd vote no against whatever it is so that you vote on the side where it is, you're not taking advantage, economic advantage.
The way the code provision reads is if your vote is required by law. And a deadlock does not necessarily mean your vote is required by law. So that, that's the problem with your hypothetical. So let's assume that your vote is required by law and in a condemnation matter or something. Then you're able to set aside your abstention and vote however you like. It could be yea or nay.
Because it was required by law.
Because it was required by law. But that, and this is my last sentence in, in that. But if, if the vote is required by law, but that director nonetheless refuses to vote by abstaining, then I say it's considered a vote with a majority. Now.
But, but keep in mind, Bill, that in the last few years, the conflict was, or an economic benefit to a director had changed. In the past, if, if the board was considering a new water line in front of your house, well, it benefited everybody in the neighborhood, so there was no conflict to the director. But there was recent changes that caused that to actually be called a conflict. So there's going to be situations where it's probably fine for the director to vote in favor of it because it's benefiting their whole neighborhood, it's not just benefiting them personally.
Not a water line to their house, it's to the whole neighborhood.
Well, I'm thinking the most recent thing where Doug and I both abstained because we thought it was a conflict of interest. Now we're being told that we actually would be forced to vote for it.
Only if your vote is required as a matter of law. If that's not the case, and I would tell you, I don't think your vote is required as a matter of law, then you're just free to abstain. And, and I carved that out. Under those circumstances, an abstention is not considered a vote with a majority. It's considered a, as if the director was absent from the meeting.
So we still will be able to abstain when we have a conflict of interest?
I remember on, on that particular vote that you're talking about, Bill, you suggested I abstain, remember? Because I, I started the vote and then it had to do with the.
Bill knew he should have abstained because he knew he was in there, but you were more of a maybe.
You were a possible beneficiary of the vote.
And I most likely will be if I follow up on it.
Yeah, and, and the, the rule change that George is referring to, basically if you're within five hundred feet of mainline repair, maintenance, construction, you should bring it to our attention and we should discuss it to deter, to determine if you've got a, an interest financially.
If our property.
Five hundred feet.
Any property owns within five hundred feet of a district project.
I was just saying, I thought that's what I remember.
And it's, and this is crazy California, it doesn't make any sense. It encompasses repair. So, and I don't know how they can rationalize this, but it's not just a new line. It's repair, maintenance, all those types of things.
So you mean.
See if you see us fixing a leak.
You better tell us at the next meeting.
Only if it was a board item. So what happened when we, when we reported repair, Billy Road, I should have abstained? Because I have a hot list on Billy Road?
Depends on the type of repair. If it.
They were replacing the whole line.
Yeah, but that, but that was approved before this change came through.
Yeah.
But that just goes to show you how crazy these rules are.
Right. Well, wasn't there used to be a two hundred and fifty dollar rule too?
That's for gifts.
If you did over two hundred and fifty dollars with somebody, you couldn't vote for anything they wanted?
I think that's for gifts.
Yeah, no gifts. I thought this was business, something to do with business.
That's like part of that C-700.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I need a little more clarification, Dustin. If, if you've got it up there. You, you see the way that this is written, that first paragraph of four point seven quorum? And the correction in the last sentence says a member abstaining in a vote is considered casting in the affirmative for that vote.
Yeah, I would say.
In the affirmative or with the majority?
With the majority.
With the majority instead of affirmative.
Yeah.
And I would, let's, let's make sure the.
I like this in the affirmative.
Yeah, it should be in the majority.
I, I always thought that when you abstained, you, you didn't vote, you weren't voting on anything.
That's what people think. And that's what we all thought.
That's why we wanted to clarify.
And that's why when we, somehow we bounced around this and I came up with these weird ideas and got all these devious plans and.
I think notwithstanding these cases, these old cases, I think there is some discretion here on the district's part. I think if we had a policy and it said it's considered a vote in the affirmative, I think I could defend it if it came to the lawsuit. But I think in the absence of a policy, the rule would be that an abstention is considered a vote in favor of the majority.
Okay.
So if you just didn't have a policy, that would be the default.
And this is our policy that we were talking about.
Yeah, and you know, this is.
Because one of the reasons we're doing, the whole purpose of this policy is to try and deal with those situations where you don't have a majority. You have two-two and one abstention. Where is that abstention going to go? If you change this to casting it in the majority, well, there's no majority.
Or it's that meeting when we had three, only three directors. And you know, if we would have had abstentions then, it would have just.
I always vote no when there's only three. I always vote no when there's three because nothing gets done.
Yeah, puts it off to the next meeting if more people are.
By the way, just, I haven't done the research, but I think if you wanted a policy, you could say as long as there's a quorum, a majority of the quorum is enough to take action. So in the case of three, it would only take two to take action.
Oh, really? I was wondering about that.
I think that's defensible, you know, again, without the benefit of research, but I'm pretty sure I could make a pretty good argument.
We were always told that three, you got a majority.
Oh, yeah.
Only one of us shows up.
Then you don't have a quorum.
Yeah.
You can't do anything.
Only two shows up, you can't do anything.
So I think, you know, just to summarize, I think you've got some discretion here. If you like that, consider casting in the affirmative. I can't guarantee you it's, it's perfect, but I, I think it's defensible.
But if you do that, you better change the example then. Well, then the example would change to. The example says the reverse.
Well, you mean my, my language?
No, because, because that is only dealing with issues relative to conflict of interest.
Yeah, so Dustin's revised language here is fine.
Okay. So in other words, on this issue that Bill's talking about, on our water rates for the.
Financial, okay, financial.
When I abstained, I was actually voting in the affirmative.
No, because it didn't matter.
No, it didn't matter, but if it had.
If it would have mattered under this policy.
Personally, I wanted it to pass, but because of a conflict of interest, I voted, I didn't vote.
If the three remaining board members, it went two-one, then under our new rules, it would have passed.
Well, well, it did pass with the three board members.
Yeah, but if it had only been four. If it was a two-one vote between the three members that weren't in a conflict of interest, then the abstentions would have been affirmatives.
They wouldn't, wouldn't pass four-one. Well, can I, can we just work, somebody work with, no, no, I'm just saying, can this be rewritten so that it's, it's simple to understand?
Unfortunately, simple probably doesn't get the legal, the governmental version these days.
Was telling us was a simple answer to me.
Yeah, well, just. But this is the legal jargon to get to that simple answer. I think all you do have to do is change the.
Yeah, you're just taking out that blue example, you're taking out that entire paragraph and inserting that new paragraph.
Adding this new paragraph.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll go along with that.
And then the special media, on B, special meetings, we're changing that. We changed that. So someone make a motion?
But we, but we, yeah, we changed to Dustin's. What do we do?
Public?
Board.
I move approve the adopted changes to chapter four meetings. I'm sorry.
You'll still be able to talk as soon as you get the meeting. And it's still open for discussion.
Yeah, okay. I move to approve, to adopt the changes to chapter four meetings of the policy slash manual as presented, as amended with Dustin's email. We have a second. Okay, we have a second. Public?
Well, I have a question regarding.
I don't know.
Report results. How, how do you record that for a meeting?
They did.
That's what I asked him.
Yeah, we covered that. If. The likely scenario is somebody will abstain and it doesn't matter. It still passes or still fails or whatever the result is.
What, what numbers do you say?
It's still listed as an abstention. The only way that it'll ever be a narrative in the minutes is if the abstention is the deciding vote. So let's say it's a two-two, then under this proposed policy, assuming it's not an abstention as a result of an economic conflict, then it would be considered a vote in favor of whatever the motion is.
Motion passes.
Two-two.
Two-two with one abstention.
Pursuant to policy two point, or four point whatever.
Four point seven.
So then.
Nobody in the public reached it. Go on.
The, the minutes would reflect it and tie it back to the policy.
It would be weird.
Yes.
Somebody would think it was a mistake. Take a situation.
This isn't going to come up that often.
Did somebody second my motion? Anybody else? Yeah, Doug seconded it and so did Ken. If we are all good, all in favor of the amendments to items four point one B and four point seven to the PID rules and regulations, chapter four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero.
No abstentions.
Someone should have just.
We should have two or three. Don't get me started on having to abstain.
That was a conflict. Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's. Yay, we're looking pretty good here. Let's go ahead and let's boogie through the rest of this stuff. I might actually eat some.
Dinner?
Some food tonight, yeah. I'm running on, I'm running out of yogurt and a banana, so. Treasurer, treasurer's report, Kevin Regalas.
Can we get there with a quick one sec? We've got to get through all this.
I had homemade fried rice tonight for dinner.
Go ahead, rub it in there. Anybody else have anything good to eat? I had a banana at about six this morning, I had yogurt at about, I had yogurt at eight-thirty, so I'm.
Well, what about that banana split?
We're on about three hundred calories at this point, if even that.
Okay, you have my written, written report. I'm currently in the process of finalizing the budget. It seems like me and George are crossing paths on our.
Are not crossing.
Are not crossing paths. We're crossing in the office, that's about it.
You guys are abstaining.
But you have my written report. We're right on line with budget on both revenue and operating expenses. We're down on budget for the pipeline, which makes sense because a lot of those forces are being used in other capital projects. Capital projects, not only meaning the corporation yard, but the grant project for the Billy Road and Skyway project. Those are, that's outside of the regularly operational pipeline projects. So our pipeline projects will be down. You'll see that more detailed in the budget itself. Right now, we are in the process of changing over. We went live with our utility billing with Tyler Monday. Everything seems to be going as good as it possibly could go. We have, it seems like it's a lot more user friendly, but they're going to be on site for the next two weeks. So they'll be here holding our hands through this process. We finally have a receipt printer. We used to handwrite receipts. I don't know if you've ever gotten one here or not, but we used to handwrite receipts. We now have a receipt printer that actually will verify what cash was tendered and what was returned. Or we can frank their, their receipt if that's what they would like. So things are a lot more efficient, a lot more updated. The, what was some of the other stuff? The ICMA, we're going through that obviously with the changeover, which will happen on the twenty-ninth of July. The. What else are we doing now? Those are the main projects that we are handling. The full-page billing for this month was only half of the billing that was going out from the outsourcing. So what we did was we held off on a stuffer for this month and we pushed that stuffer into the next month, being that we thought we'd get our best bang for our buck if we did everybody, not just half of the district, of the message we wanted to get out.
We decided August was going to be, August first was going to, or whenever we do the billing, was going to be.
We had it as the first one, which the first one was going to be July, is what we thought we were going to do. But, so we had, Cedar Creek actually created it, processed it, and then we just said, "Hold off and we'll do it in the next month," so. So half our bills will go out with the old yucky postcard and the other half will go out with the nice full-page billing.
That's just because they were ready at that juncture.
It's how they wanted to process it from, from Tyler's perspective, is that they wanted to kind of, they wanted you to calculate all of the bills in Springbrook, the old system, and then calculate all the bills in Tyler and do a comparison, but they wanted half of them, I don't, they wanted to, to split it in half to make sure that we weren't so far behind because we already do it in stages. So we do stage one as the first twenty and then the stage two is the next twenty. So they wanted to make sure that that stage one wasn't held up in, in the delivery of those bills. So we did stage one in the current system and we're doing stage two in the new system, so. That's about it.
Any questions from the public on treasurer's report?
The, there is one more thing. I talked to Brandy Stentelman, who is the bond broker that we use. I met with them down in San Francisco and I was down there. And they were asking if it was to the, if the board's pleasure of them to come up and kind of give the board some education on what the bond market's doing right now, what the process of issuing bonds, issuing debt to secure a project, how those things would go about, maybe if they could answer any of the questions that the board might have about the steps that they needed, would go through to, to get a bond issuance with a rate increase attached to it. So I said that I would bring that up and see if it was of the board's pleasure for them to come up and give some education to you guys.
How long would that, what do you imagine, how long would it take?
It's.
Half hour, they'd probably give you a half hour presentation.
Okay, so we could do it during a regular board meeting. I, I just want.
Yeah, oh, yeah, regular board meeting.
On a two and a half hour, you know, presentation or something like that.
Yeah, it would just be a regular board meeting and so I said that I'd bring that up to you guys and see what your guys' pleasure was.
I, I did, one of the reasons I, Kevin and I were talking about this and I didn't just have them show up is we got some positive feedback from the state on low-interest financing for our process water recycle project. Of course, they can't give us a yes, but they told us to proceed with making application. They think they can fit our project into one of the programs they have, so. programs they have. So Brandy's, I think, is aware of that. They're still willing to come up and educate you, but they may be a plan B if the state's low interest financing doesn't come through.
Or a bridge. If the state doesn't finance a hundred percent, they can bridge those, those loans too. And so they're, and I explained that to them, that this is what the process was and they, they said that they still would like to come up and touch base with you guys and also to educate you guys, but also talk about some of these bridge financing that they, they've completed and in the state of the market and stuff like that, so.
Well, I think it's a win-win to keep the, uh, educational level going, to refresh our memories about what this process was that we went through before. And it's good for them. They maintain contact with the board because they want our business. So they're willing to invest the money to send somebody up here and I think we should entertain that.
Okay.
Myself.
I'll contact him and let him know and schedule him for the next board meeting.
For sure, for sure.
Cool.
I move maybe September.
Treasurers' report.
Next or maybe September.
I second.
Lauren?
Uh, I just wanted to ask the treasurer, if this process water, uh, project goes through, what do you estimate the high of the low would be for a fee raise to the, the repair?
Uh, I, my, my estimation is between three and five dollars per month on average. It just matters how we calculate the fee, how the board decides to spread that cost out to the rate payers. If they decide to spread it out on a consumption basis or just a flat rate service fee, that, that, that's gonna be up to the board. We'll give them all the information. But the, if, if we would have to, if we're gonna have to recoup the debt service on that at a flat rate, it's between three and five dollars.
Would that substitute to two eighteen, right?
Absolutely.
Right, there's a whole big hearing.
So then a follow-up for George would be, would you think it would be fair to have a flat rate fee for every one of your customers? Or do you think it'd be fair to have a consumption, re, on a consumption, the fee on a consumption, because some people use thousands of dollars worth of water to cost more a filter there than it would be to, to do wars?
I'm not ready to make that recommendation one way or the other. We'll prepare all the options for the board to consider and if I think one's more fair than the other, but it's gonna take some evaluation before I can make that recommendation.
We've got a long time before we get to that particular step. Financing will also be part of that.
Most definitely.
How long a loan is or.
What the interest rate is.
Interest rate is, it's all gonna be reflected, so. Yeah, long ways down the line on that. Any other comments from the public on there? Board, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of passing the Treasurers' report as presented, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
No no this time, Ken? Didn't you say no last time?
I'm gonna abstain just to see if you guys will pay attention.
You should have abstained.
Okay, uh, June checks. Let's start with Director Duncan.
Okay, I have very few. I, earlier I asked Kevin about the, uh, on, uh, iPad one seventy-five, there was a big, huge increase in the, um, expenditures and it wasn't noted in the yellow. All of it, there was only, uh, fifty-seven thousand and it was over, uh, it was over how much?
What was it?
Two hundred.
Over two hundred thousand. Looking at the graph.
And I explained.
No, it was, yeah, it was over two hundred thousand, yeah. And he explained to me that now that with the new system, they have to put payroll withholding in there and then the thirty-two thousand, oh, you did say that one.
I had the thirty-two.
It was all a lot of little ones that caused the, the big increase. That was the one question. And the other question, I asked, why did Patrick's O'Hara end up at the beginning of the alphabet?
I explained that one too.
Yeah, you explained that one.
When we input P?
No.
When we input the vendor.
There's a space in front of it accidentally and it sorts all spaces first. Okay, and the only other one I had was.
I thought it's just cause we wanna single him out.
Single him out, right.
Really, yeah, you gotta watch that guy too.
No, I.
And then the other one was, um, on page one seventy-nine. Let's see, where is it? It's an annual service.
DataMatic, that what you're talking about?
Annual service, uh.
Agreement?
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand, yeah, sixteen thousand dollars.
Seven hundred.
That, that'll be an annual service agreement with DataMatic for the maintenance, uh, on our automated meter reading system.
The what's?
Automated meter reading system, the maintenance.
Oh.
Maintenance contract on all of the.
The meters.
Little, little boxes.
Meters, all the electronics about the meters.
Is that the first time we paid this?
No, we made it last, we made it last year too.
Oh, did we? Okay.
Just like we saw ten meters replaced and.
Yep, the other thing is, is you made the decision to have them house the data so that, that's part of that fee as well. They, they have all our meter reading data.
Would that save us any money if we took it in-house and would it be possible for us?
Way too much storage.
Way too much.
Wasn't worth the additional cost.
Not worth it.
Okay, that's all I have.
Does, does that maintenance mean straightening up the things that are bent on stop signs?
No.
That's our maintenance.
Public member of the Water Conservation Committee. Still wanna ask question?
No, we give you a ladder, then we're liable.
Now, the kids really seem to like to bend those things over.
We have public members on the work.
Good idea, if you do see those, to just call into the district. I've spotted them before. I think, you know, the workers spot them, you know? But if you see those, you know, call into the district and say, yeah, we've got a antenna that's bent down or broke off or, I've spotted a couple over the past couple of years.
Normally, our, our system is a smart system where it shouldn't, if it's not reading, it should pick it up and flag it for that. So even if maybe it's sitting like this, it might still be reading, so we're not, we're not getting a flag on that.
Who knows, maybe they bent it that way just to get a better read on it too.
Monday or Tuesday.
Just like taking an antenna.
Monday or Tuesday, I saw somebody digging up a meter.
So they may not be. Was it us?
Uh, it was us, yeah. That's why I didn't call it in.
Call those in, yeah, I know, when we're digging.
I didn't call that one in, no.
When we're digging them up, that's, uh, that was the only two you had?
Yes.
Okay. Bill, please.
Page one seventy-nine.
Okay.
It's, uh, vendor David and Mary Colenay repairs on Forest Lane for thirty-eight seventy-one. What was that one?
That was another, uh, meter reading error. Um, it was a vacant home and we, the water was turned on. We have a process where they can turn the water on for inspection services. And so the meter reader went out, turned the water on and, um, left it for inspection. Well, the inspection was for actually the septic tank, so nobody went in the house and the wa, the, uh, refrigerator ice maker leaked and went all the way onto the floor and sat there for a while before they found it. So we had to do some, um,
Repairs.
Repairs.
This one for, this one for Larry?
This is our insurance.
This is one with Larry?
Does our insurance cover it?
That was mine.
Yes, we process it. It'll go through our insurance.
I'm sorry, whose property was this? Was this our property?
No, no, it was a realtor, it was.
Yeah, realtor's investment instructions to turn on the water, we did it. Well, how are we liable for a leak inside the house?
We didn't go turn off.
We didn't turn it off when we normally would have. So it went all weekend instead of being turned off the next day.
We have procedures that.
We also have procedures. If you turn it on and the meter's moving, the meter reader's supposed to be verifying where that water's going.
The mistakes were made.
That was the biggest procedural error.
Thank you.
Well, I, I'm glad we're admitting to our errors and took care of it.
Yep.
And we should.
The only other thing I have is on page one eighty-nine, it's accumulated depreciation plant, thirty-eight twenty-eight oh nine. What, what plant is still depreciating?
What's, what, where are you at?
One eighty-nine?
One eighty-nine, it says fund summary.
That, that is a miscode and we've corrected that. The, um, for some reason, the inventory was going into accumulated depreciation when they set it up. So through the inventory module, when you ordered it, there's a set account code that you put in there. And for some reason, when they set up that accumu, uh, that, uh, inventory module, they put it to accumulated depreciation. So we had to go through and change that whole thing and then we back it out and put it into inventory. Well, it's not gonna show up here because it was stuck in there when they ordered it through the purchasing, so it's not gonna show the negative out of there, so i- it's a miscode through the system. That should have went to inventory expense.
For inventory, what do you, what do you, you're gonna subtract it and it disappears? Is that it?
You make a journal entry out of there and put it into inventory.
Why don't you explain what the journal entry is then?
Right, yeah, so you take it out of that, it's accumulated depreciation.
How much was that?
Into inventory.
Oh, thirty-eight twenty-eight oh nine.
It's inventory.
Part of the.
That's inventory.
That's part of the increase then.
Yeah, hey, this is the best I've ever done. I caught, got two of two errors.
Oh, you got, you got one line right there. You got the other one too.
The total was a million fifty-three and that was part of it.
Well, but that's a regular purchase. It's just a regular purchase.
It doesn't change the total. It goes in a different bucket.
Oh, just run the different bucket.
He's looking at the report's account summary, which is a new, new report, a new system, and it shows where all the, all the stuff was, uh, was coded to within the GL.
So, disagree.
Director Kellaw?
Yeah, I do. I, I was hoping we found.
Director Kellaw?
Yes, well, that's a.
Director Hunt?
No questions.
Director Flesher?
Uh, just a couple of questions for my application. On page one seventy-two, iPad page one seventy-two, uh, we have two on the six twenty and six eleven, where I B E W nine hundred and five six cents. Is that dues that we've collected from the employees and then paid? And then over on one eighty-nine, is we have an account that says you due dues of eighteen hundred and ten dollars. I guess that would be that about, would it?
Nine.
Yeah, good. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Director Flesher. And mine starts on one seventy-nine. I had one other one at the top. Uh, commercial pump and mechanical, um, what was that? Not, I'm not really concerned with the dollar amount, but what was the rebuild of that submersible pump? Where do we have it?
That was, that was, uh, I think the, um, we talked about this at the board a couple of months ago. We have, uh, it was a sump pump that went bad.
Okay.
And we got that repaired and this is purchasing a, a backup, so we don't have that problem again.
Okay, I just wondered if that was it. I just couldn't think of anywhere besides what we had talked about before, of the submersible. Uh, page one eighty, um, a tank rehab, that's to Harper and Associates. Is that our final payment? That's the final payment there, the thirteen thousand seven forty?
To Harper. I believe that's it. We haven't got any more invoices from Harper.
That should be the last one from Harper. That's the engineer.
That should be our final, on the engineer, I mean.
That's the engineer.
Exactly, but that should be our final payment to them.
But not to Blasco?
I think so.
Not to Blasco, but to them.
Yes.
Okay. Um, page one eighty-two.
No.
Oh, well, we're on the checks. Since it's relative, I'm gonna answer your question.
Okay.
Blasco did, after much consternation, did sign the agreement and so we're processing that.
We sent them a check for eight thousand.
Yeah, they were seriously contemplating not agreeing to your new number.
Oh, remember we did that once.
That would have been interesting if I had have been inclined to this.
Do you know why?
Go right to the max then.
Do you know why they agreed?
We intimidated them.
There you go.
Dustin's the man.
Gives Dustin some credit on that. Otherwise, he's not gonna be happy.
We were saying, saying you just took money.
Jim worked hard to convince them that it would be a good idea to get this over with. They had some significant additional expenses that they weren't anticipating, I'll put it that way.
Yes, they did. Um, in vendor Meeks, page one eighty-two, um, I, you know, I just know I don't see a lot of Payless building supply in here and I know that on most items that we purchase, I see Payless in here for twenty-eight hundred, but they come out considerably less expensive than Meeks. So they are all getting an opportunity to bid these things, right?
Yes.
And I'm not telling Jim, I'm not telling Jim where to go, cause I trust his instinct and where he's gonna get the most quality product. But I just know that with most of this.
We've been bidding them out, as far as I know. I know early on, Jim talked about Meeks and I think Meeks got more aggressive on certain projects when, um, things shut down up here, when builders shut down.
Yeah, exactly. Well, okay, I'm gonna work on Brandy's and Payless. Okay, uh, the fencing, Northern California Fence, um, is that the rental on the fence or is that our final payment for the fencing out here?
No, no, that, that's, that's something that's gonna need some explanation memo. Because remember we're on, we had the tank, we had the fence that ran over by the tank and we needed it repaired immediately.
Yes.
So we did that on a change order with Northern California Fence. And I think that's part of that.
Okay, so I thought we had paid for the fencing and then I was like.
We've only paid for, you know, phase one of the fencing.
Exactly, the fencing that we had, and that's why I was thinking, why are we doing, because we weren't renting the fencing from them.
I'm going to assume that that's what that is. That is the repair we had to make.
Run over by a tank?
No, up or surrounding the tank, it was run over by a car.
Oh.
We needed to get it repaired quickly and they were willing to do it with the same pricing they did on this bid.
Who, which tank?
It was the one over here behind the Elks.
Who's car?
Back in there.
PID vehicle?
No.
No, it was private.
We're gonna be recovering.
We'll recover it.
Yeah.
We got their insurance information through the police report, all that.
They insured?
Yes, it was a, it's a medication issue.
It was an old elk.
Page one eighty-three, um, pace supply. I noticed five hundred feet of C nine hundred, it looks like six inch in there. It's in there. Is that for an upcoming project? That we have that or is it just so we have that on hand? That's just our, our stocking up?
Where is it?
It's on.
Uh, right at the bottom, very, very bottom.
Pace, five hundred of six.
Pace supply?
That is probably inventory.
Inventory.
It is inventory, but do we have a six inch project coming up?
I'm just really on this check thing this year.
Have we moved any inventory here yet?
I sat quiet for a couple of months, you know, now I'm just rattling cage. I know, I've got just all these weird questions.
Have we moved any inventory over here yet?
No.
No. When do you plan on doing that?
We're working on it. I don't have a date yet.
You have a date? We're gonna vacate the rental?
No, I gotta get with Jim. We haven't been crossing paths.
Oh, okay.
I'm pushing him for September. He hasn't pushed me back yet.
Do I have a motion to approve the June checks? Yes.
The half a million dollars for two thousand eleven refinances?
Yeah.
That's like ten percent of your whole cash and service, isn't it?
Well, that was a.
The director asked about sort of the half a million dollars?
Well, they, they know, they know.
It's in a reserve, no.
No, this is a, uh, in two thousand one, we refinanced debt, um, up, I think the refinance was nine million dollars. Um, and so three years ago, that, and that annual debt service was nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Uh, three years ago, because interest rates were so low, we were able to refinance that debt over three years, the same amount of time that they had at one point three percent interest rate. That lowered our debt service down to five hundred thousand dollars an annual debt service, one lump sum. Um, and if you look at the detail, we paid seven thousand in interest for the year on that debt. So it was existing debt that we refinanced, that this existing debt was to pay for that old treatment plant up there and the, I think even raising, no, not raising the dam, but there was a few other projects associated with that that we had refinanced.
New treatment plant too, part of it.
The new treatment plant, that's right. Um, so that's what that's about. So they've been very actively involved in that refinance.
That's why the board, initially the last rate increase was recommended to be twelve percent and then four percent, four percent. But this refinancing was, gave them a comfort level to only pass a four, 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 plus or minus rate increase.
Cause I called up Kevin and asked him about it and he said it used to be nine and now it's fifty-five.
Used to be almost a million.
Kevin, Kevin did a great job on that.
Thank you, Larry.
I've been following up with that, Kevin, and it's good, but we're gonna be really getting down in the nitty gritty of it here in a little while.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, see, we owe twelve million bucks.
Well, let's not get into that right now. Let's go, let's go, let's do. Well, let's not get into that right now, let's go, let's go, let's do.
I move we approve the June checks.
Approval of June checks, thank you.
Uh, I move we approve the June checks, it's listed in the agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, approval of the June checks? Say aye.
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 And any, pass this five zero.
You're not gonna abstain?
I'm glad I was actually watching you on that one. Pass this five zero.
Director Duncan has made every motion, I seconded one, but between them two, they've made every motion, they've made seconded.
You missed the meetings where, where Bill and I would be doing it. Um, Director's comment, I'm gonna start with Director Flesher.
Yeah, one of the things is you've got some emails from me on this one here I brought out, I find it kind of interesting. Yeah, that I followed up on the one, trying to explain myself and try to get you where a little bit better acquainted with me. Uh, seventy years ago, I was ten years old at the time, I was told by a guy that was building houses that if you see somebody making a mistake, don't repeat it. You know, I followed that through my entire life and it's been very productive for me. And, uh, it's kind of interesting on this, and a lot of this I lived by being in the district of Sedan long and that's what I was trying to make. When I was campaigning, I gave quite a number of speeches and three of them, I was giving one to, it was one of Lauren's groups back there. I had people in the audience ask me about happenings from past boards. And I made sure that they knew that I would never criticize them, any of the board, because you do the best you can with what you got at the time. But one of the things that I would try not to do if I was elected to the position is not make the same blasted mistakes some of them made, you know? And two of them, two different individuals, asked me about the lime saddle water, not knowing it. One of them was on a board member when they were begging the PID to buy the lime saddle powerhouse and he knew it. I knew how to word it because of the wording they like doing speeches. And come to find out was what Kevin has made me aware of and I found out for a fact that we could've got it for a dollar. That's what Fertino did, but the big thing I looked at was that it gave us a pipe into twenty-five thousand acre feet of water. But that's all water under the bridge. And then when I found this article, which was in here and I shared some of this with Trevor back there, this is what the P, Post used to do. And this is where I got this one out of, I wish the print was a little bigger. And then on my back of my email, and I'll share this because it's all public information, uh, two things I wanted to look at in this article here, which was on the front here, if I ever give you one of them. Sylvia Cook and Dick Ryan were successfully recalled in nineteen seventy-nine and Roland Wright was not elected. And the main reason for those defeats was the verbal fighting in that old boardroom or wherever they were at at that particular time. And going after the diamond water land, diamond land water rights. I worked for Diamond Match in fifty-six, seven and eight in the summer and during out the year. And I worked on some of the water coming into that town and, and I really actively encouraged Sylvia Cook and Dick Ryan. Sylvia Cook was the ER person up here and Dick Ryan was a stockbroker, retired lieutenant colonel, prince of a guy. And a very strong Rotarian, just a super individual. And I had to go around because I actually wanted them to go after that water right. And I had to go say, Dick, I got you recalled! Roland Wright went, had a beautiful orchard, which I did some irrigation work on, where the, uh, apple tree village is at. Oh, kind of a beautiful orchard up there. And then the other one, which we talked about a little bit, was in nineteen eighty-five, the filtration plant, and that's in this one here. And there's certainly some short sight that's going on there. And, uh, as I mentioned here in the bottom, we've got a lot of things that we're doing, the water recycling project, another big capital A. And we gotta look at all the options 'cause we sure don't wanna make the same mistake twice. And I haven't criticized one board, I just said, let's look and see what they didn't do. Because if we'd have had the diamond land rights, water rights right now, we could if we wanted to, we would have very little drought problems. And we could have water running into the Magalia, into the Paradise Lake right now through our powerhouse on the DeWinzing Meadows. Splitting it half to the Centerville and half going into our lake on this particular point. So you gotta look way the heck of gone down the road, my point, so that. So I'm not criticizing anybody, I'm just saying, let's not make the same mistake. If the bo, if the wall's not square, let's make the next one square.
Thank you Director Flesher. Director Hunt?
I have only a, a passing comment, uh, plant a seed in the director's minds. Uh, a, uh, constituent, uh, brought this up to me. I was taking a look at the Paradise Lake up there and was explaining to them that, uh, part of our responsibilities, uh, because of the way the dam was financed, funded or grants, was that we provide recreation, some aspect of recreation facilities to the public. And, uh, conversation went to kayaking and, uh, there was one rowboat out on the lake, but there were no kayakers at that time. And, uh, the question was, well, do you, uh, do you rent kayaks? And I said, well, no, we don't. Um, and I think maybe that is something that would not be a very large investment on PID's part. If we were to use that boat house that's down there to store, you know, not a lot, not to serve everybody all the time. And we can't certainly have somebody that's on site of a rental place area, but have to be rent by reservation or something like that. But perhaps, uh, the committee can talk about whether we want to purchase some kayaks and make them available for the public to rent and use right there from that, uh, that facility. So, just something that the public brought up and I thought I was worthwhile to consider.
You're gonna put that on the agenda for the later day? Good.
And that's it.
Thank you Director Hunt, interesting proposition. Director Kellogg?
Uh, I have two things concerned with the webpage. I got on the webpage today and found that a lot of things were out of date, hadn't been kept up with the. Uh, John Price was still on it and somebody else too was still on it. Has, it's just, it's just, um, maintenance is all for different things. I thought the webpage overall was really good. Um, and I noticed, uh, director's thing is down and it probably will be down for a while yet, I guess. So that was my webpage comment. Then, uh, I, the Enterprise Record had an article about ten days ago and it was talking about districts that have their payroll on their webpage. All the wages by position is public information. And I thought, maybe we should do that. So I would like to propose at the next board meeting that we put that on the agenda as an item to consider whether we open the payroll, it's public, we're public business. And there are districts in the state that have their payroll on the webpage. That we put the payroll listed on the webpage, similar to the one that Kevin has provided me with in the past in the board, which it just lists the job description, doesn't list anybody's name. And then on, and then have a continuing page where you, I guess there's a webpage with the state or something that shows water districts and wages and so forth. So that you could, whoever looked at it could actually click on this and go look at comparative wages at different places. The reason for it is that we're going into, it looks like some sort of financing for the water thing, to recycle water. So if we can take one thing of rumors on wages and benefits out of the picture, simply by putting it on the webpage, I know that we'll have, you're always gonna have somebody complain about the wages. But at the same time, we won't have a very hard time recruiting any future employees here. 'Cause I think as far as the working men in this town would just love to have the job. But I don't think there's any downside to it, other than us getting used to having the public look at it. And I think initially, they might be curious and everything else, but in the long run, I think it would just be, they know. There is no looking around, there's no questioning, we go through a rate increase and they, well, how much are you making, dah, 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 dah? It's right there, go look it up if you wanna know. And off we go. And if other districts have been able to do it and it didn't rec, no directors got recalled over it or anything. 'Cause I think the directors' pay and benefits should also be on the webpage. So that's what I'd like to see next month on the, um.
Agenda.
Agenda, and by doing it this way, you've got a whole month to think about it. I almost called up Georgiana and put it on the agenda for tonight and I thought, no, wait a minute, that's not right. We need time for the directors to think about it and whoever the public are here to give us, go home and think about it. Talk to your friends and so forth on the district and think if it's a good idea, a bad idea. I don't, I don't think I'll get Ken's hold on this.
You might.
Huh?
I said you might.
Oh, okay. At any rate, that's the suggestion or the thing to put on the agenda. That's it.
That was your comment?
Yeah.
Director Duncan?
I'm trying to think.
After that.
'Cause you can't, you can't talk about what other directors have talked about.
You don't wanna make a discussion.
No, we don't wanna make an exception out of it.
Next month.
The thing, well, one thing that brought, I, I don't know if my memory is missing me or not, but I recall that the reason Ryan and Sylvia got recalled was because they gave the, a raise to somebody and they weren't supposed to. That's the one I remember. And I, you know, and I remember, uh, who was Dust Books, uh, who was the guy, uh, that had Dust Books? Yeah, Fulton, Len Fulton at the time was doing a, being a pollster. And he took a poll and he said that there's no way they were gonna get recalled. And they did, and that was the last time he did a pollster. But I, it's so funny because I remember different that. Now, as far as, um, we've had, uh, an upset here at PID, when I came aboard, they were, they were having an argument. I think everyone's forgotten about it. But they were having arguments here and it was really bad. Uh, the, the, um, this is before George. The, uh, old business was getting so long that they never got to the new business because nothing was getting done, they, all they did was fight. And, uh, because of that, two of the three existing members didn't get re, get, get reelected.
Well, I was attending meeting.
No, no disrespect.
Director's comment's over, can't, can't comment, yeah, can't comment on it. Director's comment.
That's why I was bringing up something other than what you did.
I appreciate that.
Is that it Larry?
That's it.
Okay, and I'd just like to thank everybody for a very productive meeting. Can see by the time that we're, we did real well tonight.
We do still have closed session.
Right.
It may last a couple hours.
Thank you. Thank, thank you Fun Wrecker, okay? So, at this point, I was just getting to say, at this point, we are gonna move into closed session with legal counsel. And we will come back out from that with an announcement as to what we're gonna do.
See, the, the goal has to be to keep Dustin's time to buck.